I'll get myself water tonight. Last time we had a miss.
Did you?
Yes.
I don't even remember.
You've got to have lots of tissues and...
All right, I'm going to call to order the June 24th, 2019 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Dubuck, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can.
So tonight, we are all on both sides of this table here for the same reason. We love our community and we're willing to dedicate our time and service to it, not just to preserve our own quality of life, but so that in 30 years, our children will be proud of the legacy that we've left for them. And to me, our legacy isn't just about the decisions we make, but how we make them. We live in tragically divisive political times where, at the highest level of American government, petty insults and personal attacks and angry rhetoric and shameless exploitation of fear are more commonplace than thoughtful discussion and debate. But it doesn't have to be that way in our community because Royal Oak deserves better than that and is better than that. So as we gather once again to make decisions about our shared future, let's strive to be the best possible versions of ourselves. Let's set an example that inspires the next generation with how we represent our values and how we seek to see the good in those who disagree with us. Like everyone else, I'm a work in progress in this regard, but I pledge, as I hope you do too, to do my part to leave a legacy of good governance for well-meaning people in spite of differing views, come together to build a stronger community and a more prosperous future.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to item number four, the presentation of check from Mind Over Matter. How are you? Welcome back.
Hi, my name is... Oops. Start again. Hi, my name is Julie Farhat and I live at 1930 LaRome Drive. For those that don't know me, I started the local nonprofit organization Mind Over Matter, lovingly referred to as MOM after losing my mom to schizophrenia and suicide in 2005. Mental health conditions are common and impact 25% of people in their lifetime. Suicide claims more than 47,000 American lives each year and rates have climbed to a 50-year high. The statistics are staggering and yet somehow I felt like I was the only one going through this painful private struggle. I quickly knew I needed to do something to turn my pain into purpose and prevent others from going through what my family and I went through. In 2006, my siblings and I started the MOM race for mental health awareness and suicide prevention here in our hometown of Royal Oak. The residential road race takes runners and walkers of all fitness levels on a 5K tour through some of Royal Oak's finest family-friendly neighborhoods and starts and ends at Star J.C. Park where my family and I lived for 20 years. The event brings families, friends, teens, survivors, mental health advocates, and weakened warriors together to broach the often unspoken topics of mental illness and suicide. The 14th Annual MOM Race took place on Saturday, May 4th. We had a sunny day and a record-setting 1,570 registrants. We also had the support of more than 60 volunteers, 100 businesses, and 195 donors. I am pleased to announce that with your help, the MOM race raised another $60,000 for local brain research, suicide prevention programming, and crisis intervention services, bringing our fundraising grand total to more than $400,000. While nothing can bring our loved ones back, it's incredible what we can accomplish when we unite to give mental illness and suicide the attention they deserve. That's Mind Over Matter. Thank you to the city of Royal Oak and all its citizens for your continued support and cooperation, especially those along the race path. Little by little, we are chipping away at the stigma that prevents so many from getting the help they need and helping to fund lifesaving programs and initiatives right here in southeast Michigan. Here to receive their $20,000 checks and say a few words about how the 2019 MOM race proceeds will be used by their charities are representatives from the University of Michigan Depression Center, No Resolve, and Common Ground. And we'll start with Steve Taylor from the University of Michigan Depression Center.
Thank you, Julie. It's a great honor to be here. Again, I should say very, very happily, this has been a wonderful tradition and as a representative of the University of Michigan Department of Psychiatry and the Depression Center, I'm honored to participate in what is a wonderful way to take what was a horrible tragedy in the loss of Gail Boldavich and turning this into a time to recognize mental illness and not only recognize it, not only raising awareness about mental illness, but raising actual funds that have been used to help, in the case of the Depression Center and the University of Michigan, to help further our research, our research into better ways to understand mental illness and better ways to treat and even prevent mental illness. Some of the work that we're doing is involved in preventing this sort of disorder, schizophrenia, that struck down Gail Boldavich. So we are continuing to be extremely grateful to the citizens of Royal Oak for opening up their community, to the commissioners for permitting this to take place, and of course to Julie and her family for doing this, arranging this race that has been a wonderful event for us and one, as I said, that we are very, very pleased to participate in. So again, thank you very much.
Okay, and next up is Dennis Legio from No Resolve.
Thank you, Julie. My name is Dennis Legio. I'm the founder of an organization called No Resolve. We are dedicated to youth mental health awareness and suicide prevention. I started this organization in 2007 after I lost my father to suicide and struggled with that loss for many years. And like Julie, I wanted to do something positive with that. So I started the organization in his honor and with Julie's help and others like her, we're able to reach about 15,000 teens and young adults every year through our suicide prevention assemblies for schools, which are offered free of charge. And we teach kids about risk factors, warning signs, what to do in crisis, how to help yourself, how to help a friend, and of course, tips for coping with distress. So we're also getting ready to start, open the doors to our teen center in Shelby Township in September. And this is a place for teens by teens where they can create, connect, and confide with each other and with trusted, caring adults. Thank you, Julie, so much for your support through the years.
And last but not least, Jeff Kapasinski from Common Ground.
Good evening. As Julie said, my name is Jeff Kapasinski. I'm the Director of Business Development at Common Ground. As we like to say at Common Ground, we help people move from crisis to hope. We have helped more than 80,000 people on an annualized basis for many, many years. And we are proud of this event. We are grateful to Julie and her family, grateful to this council and the citizens of Royal Oak for allowing us to have this event. This event has turned into one of our largest fundraisers throughout the year, and it's become very, very important for us to introduce and expand some of the programming that we offer. For example, a year ago, I stood here in front of you and talked about our desire to extend our chat and text service. At the time, we were only 30 hours a week, and we were able to expand that to 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And when I talk about helping 80,000 people, you need to know that's the front door for more than 50,000 of those conversations. Royal Oak is the home to our Runaway and Homeless Youth Program, the Sanctuary House on Hendry. The art therapy program there is also a beneficiary of these funds. And this year, we are pursuing another new program that we think is going to have a great impact, particularly on our youngest clients. And that is something called an In-Home Stabilizer that allows us to, when we can't find a hospital bed, an inpatient psychiatric hospital bed for a child, this person is able to step in and work with that child in a one-on-one basis, travel with them back home, and align them with the services and the support that they need to continue their well-being. So again, I thank you. We thank Julie and her family. We're very, very proud of this event and grateful for all of the benefits that this brings to Common Ground. Good night.
I just want to take a moment to thank Julie Farhat for all of her efforts and contributions to this event. For those of you who might not make it out there for the race day, or maybe you're not a participant in the Walker race, I really, really encourage you next year to take a moment and come out there and listen to the stories and see the gathering and to see the... and really be touched emotionally by what's going on and the purpose behind what's going on. And the money that's raised is really symbolic of something much bigger, an effort to de-stigmatize mental health issues and suicide so we can get to the core of it. And everybody in this community is better off because of the work you do, Ms. Farhat. So thank you very much.
More for me next year or actually probably this fall for Suicide Awareness Month, so stay tuned.
Thank you. So now we have the announcement of the Main Street Community Accreditation.
Members of the City Commission, for the sake of the audience and those residents watching at home, I'd like to reintroduce myself. My name is Sean Cameron. I'm the DDA's Downtown Manager. And tonight, I come before you to proudly share the news that Royal Oak has been recognized by the National Main Street Center as a 2019 Main Street America accredited program. And just for some background, the Main Street program is a national framework that helps communities help themselves in terms of organizing stakeholders, economic development, historic preservation, and promoting the downtown. One of... Royal Oak is one of the newest members of the Main Street program. We officially rejoined after a hiatus of well over a decade, so we recently rejoined last year. And as a Main Street member, the DDA has adopted many of the recommendations of the program. Under the leadership of our chairman, Jay Dunston, the DDA has taken a more community-oriented approach to how it develops and implements programs. And as an example, we've added volunteers to our committees and we've made ourselves more accessible to the downtown community. The Main Street program has also enabled business owners in the downtown district to become more engaged and has given them a sense of ownership in the downtown. An example of this is the up-and-coming Live Music Thursdays promotion that the business owners are driving downtown, the DDA has come alongside them to support. And tonight's presentation of accreditation is a symbol of the progress that we're making in the program and shows the success of the grassroots approach that we've seen downtown since we've joined the program last year. With that, I'd also like to add that with the help of Main Street Oakland County's Annual Technical Assistance Program, we're excited to announce that nationally-known speaker and consultant John Schallert will be coming to downtown Royal Oak where he'll present to business owners his 14-step process of how downtowns can become regional destinations. And this will be at the Hyatt Hotel on Wednesday, July 24th at 8:00 a.m. So I'd now like to turn over the podium to Annika Norris, who's our community liaison from Main Street Oakland County. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm honored to be here tonight representing Main Street Oakland County. I'm also the liaison for Royal Oak, so it's pretty cool to be able to give the accreditation. Main Street Oakland County was established in 2000. We are part of a larger organization, the National Main Street Program. And this was established under L. Brooks, and for 20 years now, we are the nation's first and only countywide Main Street program, which is kind of cool because we have 25 communities that are actually in the Main Street program, 13 of which are at the select level, which Royal Oak is, which allows more funding from us to do things like the trainings, the program that's coming here, as well as programs throughout the community and taking them to national conferences and such. So anyway, we're just really happy to be able to present them this. When you become a select-level community, you say that you will go through an accreditation program every year, so we look at how they're following the four points of the National Main Street Program. And it's very flexible for every community, but we just want to see that they're using those four points, which is design, promotion, organization, and economic vitality. And so you are one of 1,000 communities across... programs across the U.S. that are nationally recognized. So thank you.
I think the DDA would like to get a picture too. Permission to show the facts. So I know we can stand in front here. We have two members of the DDA here this evening, Director Riley and Director Saffia. Where do you want us?
You can either be there or kind of over here. Thank you.
Centered around the...
Yeah, squeeze in just a touch. Okay. Just a little. Perfect. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, sir.
Sell high. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, for all of your efforts. And of course, we have an amazing DDA representation, you know, serving our downtown, and they do hard work and all volunteer to keep our downtown vibrant and succeeding. So Ms. Norris, thank you for making it out tonight. We really appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to public comment. Just got a few rules to read as usual related to public comment. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. Is there no public hearing scheduled this evening? This will be the only time for you to address the City Commission. I ask that comments be directed to the Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight, please raise your hand and wait to be called on by the mayor, which is me. We ask you to state your name and address for the record. And please be mindful that we wish to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes. And there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, that's all right. Feel free to reach out to us, email, whatever medium you feel best to communicate your concerns or ask your questions. Please note the City Commission won't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, when the agenda topic is discussed, we will ask those questions. And if it's not on the agenda tonight, our city manager or commissioners will direct it to the proper city department to get answers to those questions as well. Tonight, I'd like to note, City Manager Don Johnson is not with us this evening. Corrigan O'Donoghue, our Chief of Police, who also serves as the Assistant City Manager, will be serving in his stead tonight. For public comment, I first like to start with a legislative update. We're blessed and happy to have Senator Mallory McMorro here with us this evening. And Senator McMorro, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission. Really proud to be here tonight to give a brief legislative update, and I'm going to start with what's coming up for the summer. So we are currently in Lansing in budget negotiations. I know a lot of people are asking, are we going to fund the roads? Are we going to clean our water? Are we going to support our schools? We are working on that. So right now, we in the Senate voted on some budgets that are going now to conference committee, so that's the process where everybody comes back together to negotiate final budgets before hopefully something is sent to Governor Whitmer. Governor Whitmer had intended on having a budget done by the end of June. Probably safe to say, we're not on track for that. We are constitutionally obligated to have a budget done by October 1st, so I am ready to go anytime they call me back into Lansing this summer to work on it, so I'm on call, as are all of my colleagues. In our office, we're starting a senior listening tour with a town hall with Attorney General Nessel in the fall, so we're going to be touring all of the senior centers throughout the district, which consists of Birmingham, Bloomfield Hills, Berkeley, Clausen, Rochester, Rochester Hills, Royal Oak, and Troy, to try to gauge from our seniors what issues are important to them. And then we'll bring out the Attorney General and a few other special guests from Lansing to address those issues at a town hall in the fall. I'm also really excited to co-chair the Women in the Workforce Task Force on the Progressive Women's Caucus, and we're going to be hosting two roundtables throughout the state of Michigan. So I'm going to be swapping districts with Representative Cam Bensy, who represents Marquette and part of the Upper Peninsula, to host a conversation on what are the challenges of women in the workforce. So I think it'll be really interesting to see some of the contrast between women in our district who work in automotive, in the medical fields, in business, and some of her residents who work in mining and agriculture and trying to find some commonalities, which will hopefully lead to legislation in the fall. Our office is starting our recurring coffee hours. We have coffee hours and meetups every two weeks. They rotate throughout the district and they're at different days and times to try to accommodate everybody's schedule, and those are on our Facebook page. But for those who are not on Facebook or don't have internet access or don't want to receive email, we're going to have a recurring monthly coffee hour, the second Monday of each month, at the Office Coffee Shop right here in Royal Oak because it is my home base at 8:00 a.m. And we also just opened our pop-up office in Troy, which is at the Bite and Morder Co- Working Space on Crook's Road where my staff will be coming out from Lansing and will be available every Monday. People can reach out to our office to set up meetings. A few of the things that I'm working on that I wanted to touch on, particularly as we were hearing about some of the mental health issues that are being focused on here in our community. Last month was Mental Health Awareness Month, so there's a few things that I've been working on really strongly. Number one, I shared my own story publicly of having struggled with ADHD much of my life, leading to anxiety and depression, and how that's been a battle for me, but also something that hasn't been able to hold me back. And there's a number of pieces of legislation. I know my time is up, so I will leave it at that. And if anybody wants to learn more, I have some contact information cards that I'm going to leave in the back. And again, I hope people will join us on the second Monday of every month at the Office Coffee Shop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator McMorro. Thank you for coming out tonight and providing us those updates. We're very grateful. Okay, public comment. Who... See a hand? Mr. Wolf?
Senator, is that yours?
Oh, yeah, I'm standing. I was just leaving the cards in the back. You're looking out, thank you.
333 North Troy Street. First, I want to make a statement. I'm thinking a lot of people aren't aware that there's a slate of candidates wishing to oppose the machine that's running the city. And that machine includes people that are on set on reserve and chosen by this majority commission to try and offset this slate of new candidates that promises to stop the corruption and save the city. Those candidates are Stephen Miller for mayor, Randy LaVassar for commission, Pamela Lindell for commission, and Tom Halleck for commission. These four candidates that voted on as a slate will do a lot to put a few speed bumps in the corruption that has taken over this city. I'm glad our senator is here tonight because I'm very upset that the state of Michigan is continuing to allow private partner people like Ron Boji to self-enrich themselves at the expense of taxpayers, forcing the city to... I mean, offering to those in control millions, millions of dollars in bonding that are only to self-enrich contractors and developers, not including residents and businesses. Evidence, the businesses that are suing the city justifiably and rightfully despite whatever David Gillum, our attorney, says. They have the right to sue because that is the American way. When people are wronged, they have the right to seek redress. Now, I want to get back to the state of downtown. I noticed today you're wasting money on cleaning up the Star Dream Fountain and inspecting it when in a matter of days, it'll probably be covered with dust from the construction. So I can't see why you're wasting money on this right now. This is... just doesn't make sense. I presume that's about $20,000. That can go a long way to helping the seniors at Royal Oak Manor, seniors who are suffering from stress. And as I pointed out, mental illness and physical illness is... it can be exacerbated and even fatal to those who are suffering by stress. And I want to know if this is true. Mayor, I heard from a citizen that a clerk discussed that you had a meeting with someone who has intentions is to take down Royal Oak Manor and replace it with condominiums more conducive to serving the bars and the businesses in Royal Oak. And if that is true or not true, I'd like you to answer that tonight. I'm putting you on the spot. And this is reprehensible, that you would even entertain to talk to these people about evicting seniors.
Mr. Wolf, I need you to finish your last thought.
I wish I can be here the day when you finish your last thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Mr. Ashley.
My name is Alan Ashley. I'm president-elect of Royal Oak Manor. I take office on July 1st. I now represent 245 co-op members at Royal Oak Manor. I'm still continuing my discussion of last time since one commissioner made a statement and I couldn't rebut him. So here it is. As I said before, I talked to one of the commissioners and he wanted to help Royal Oak Manor. So I said, well, you want to help lower the $45 parking in P7 down to 25? The response was, not going to happen. Well, I says, well then, give us permanent... permit parking on 7th Street, Williams, and 6th. Not going to happen. We're getting rid of permits. Then I says, you know, why don't you just give seniors free parking like you have all over the city? That's not going to happen. I have brought to this commission, to the infrastructure, to the DDA, suggestions after suggestions. You want to help? Let's get together and make a decision. This commission has done nothing for seniors. Not a darn thing has done for helping us in our parking problem. You people believe that seniors should sit on a bench and die because your feeling is we don't count in this city. You've got more buyers in here around that we go to, and you people aren't helping us. We're helping the city by spending money down here. Our people walk to almost 35 restaurants in our walking distance. We're helping businesses here. But no, do we get any help from the city? Not a darn thing from this city commission. They do the lot of talking and no action. I have not heard one suggestion to come and help the seniors from this commission. Now, just to remind you that we are next year starting somewhere between a $6 to $12 million refurbish of Royal Oak Manor, including our parking lot and all that. So we're not going away. And come November, you're going to have 245 plus the rest of the seniors voting because this commission has done nothing for seniors. You've done a terrific job on your senior task force, which can be dissolved by the next commission. It has done nothing for the seniors. It's all talk, no action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. Mr. Wolf, you know the rules. Mr. Harrison?
Take it as a senior citizen night. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, Royal Oak. A couple of meetings ago, I came before you to express my concern with the three or four bar restaurants that have been spawning firearm incidents and one-vehicle assault incident. And I asked, you know, what are we going to do about this? Well, last week, I was listening on the TV and one of the commissioners decided that a good offense is a good defense and started harping on how the previous commission had been micromanaging the bars. Well, I've been here over 30 years as a property owner. My wife was a business owner downtown for 35 years. And let me tell you how this happened. When the bar restaurants started coming into town, and Commissioner Perush will remember that, it was kind of like a B-Western movie. Now, some of you may be too young to remember what a B-Western movie is, but the plot was generally that the saloon owner ran the town with the assistance of one of the political officials, be it the mayor, the sheriff, or the judge. In our case, it was the mayor. His clients were the bars that were coming into town, and it took a long time before we found that out. But anyway, they came into town, it's kind of like the bad neighbor that moved into your neighborhood and started telling everybody what they should do when they're the new neighbor, you know? To sit down and shut up. To sit down and shut up. So anyway, the first issue was that it created a tremendous parking problem. The city was not set up for large crowds, and it was pushing business out. Businesses were closing. So Laura, my wife, was on the commission at the time, and they started the Liquor Commissioner, whatever you call it today. And just for fun, she started to have the meetings at 8:00 in the morning, which was painful for those bar owners. But anyway, they soon realized that, you know, it's just not a free ride down here, and everybody's going to have to work together and get along. In today's market with what's been happening, I think the common denominator is having a party room that is not properly managed, and/or the music venue, the type of music, and that's what I mentioned before. So I think somebody ought to get together with these bar owners and say, okay, how are we going to ship up on this thing? Because we do not, as I said before, we don't want to bring what happens in Detroit to Royal Oak. So, think about it. Let's do something about it. And just one more thought. Back 30 years ago, the bar owners, yeah, they contributed to the political campaigns. I think the most Laura ever got was 150 bucks. Now we're looking at thousands. Now we understand how this works. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Callie Duffy. I live at 1007 South Washington. I'm representing many of my neighbors tonight in concern with number 14 on the agenda. Some of their concerns are why there is no retail on the lower level, the number of apartments, and mostly the height. It will affect our condos considerably. So hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll have a better showing.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. Ms. Morales?
Good evening, everyone. I'm just here to say something a little bit lighter. It's not senior-related, although I do agree that seniors are a priority. I don't agree that the commissioners don't prioritize seniors. But anyways, so I'm here to report that today was the Red Run Golf, Red Run Golf Club Golf Tournament, I'm sorry, the Royal Oak School Foundation's fundraiser, the annual golf tournament at Red Run. It's a lot of words. And it was very successful. It didn't rain, people golfed, and they raised a lot of money. And what I also wanted to point out was that there was a lot of local business participation. So it's, I think, M3 was there, Clark Hill was there. So we do have a lot of bars, but we also have a lot of other businesses, real estate offices. And not only are these businesses also in Royal Oak, but they also support the schools. And I think with all the recent budget cuts that the local school districts have seen, I think it's really great that in Royal Oak, we have businesses, people, and foundations that care about our kids. So a lot of good things happened today, and I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Ms. Morales, before you leave, could we just get your address?
All right. 2722 North Vermont.
Thank you for the updates. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. My name is Pam Sardell. I'm the founder of Michigan Friends of Companion Animals. I live in Clarkston. We're a statewide coalition of animal welfare organizations, working on initiatives to protect families from irresponsible pet retailers and animals bred in inhumane commercial facilities. Thank you for joining the list of cities in Michigan that are prohibiting the retail sale of pets that can be easily found in rescue and shelters. Several other Michigan cities also included language that would address pet retailers that do not operate out of the traditional brick and mortar building, rather online out of their homes. They are buying puppies from the same breeders and brokers located out of state that the pet stores have used. So basically, they are pet stores by definition. They are not breeding, but they often meet buyers at their home or in parking lots. During the holidays, the peak puppy-buying time, one online classified site called eBay Kijiji, may have over 30 puppies for sale each day, targeting the metro Detroit area buyers. Some online retail sellers have been investigated and arrested for selling sick puppies just this past year. So we have provided language for your consideration that would address these types of sellers, where families cannot see the conditions or meet the parents. In addition, I believe a provision should be made requiring remaining pet sellers, not impacted by the ordinance, to provide certificates of origin. This would offer some disclosure to buyers. And lastly, Royal Oak may require licensing of roadside sellers. It is unclear if individuals would be allowed to obtain a license to sell live animals on the roadside, in a parking lot, or outdoor event, or even the farmer's market. Again, we have provided language that would address this concern as well. If you did not receive the emails regarding these amendments, I have a copy here. I can leave with the clerk. And thank you again for considering the pet retail ordinance, and I hope you find our recommendations helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Thank you for making it down from Clarkston.
Good evening. My name is Chris Shelton. I live at 432 South Washington Avenue. I used to sit on the Royal Oak Animal Shelter Board as well. I simply want to voice my support for the ordinance that Pam has just talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Sarah Roughly, 2717 Oliver. I just wanted to voice my support for the ordinance. I just sent an email to, and I got a response from Sharon. Charlin. I also wanted to support the parking for the seniors.
Thank you, Ms. Roughly. All right. Anybody else here wish to speak at public comment? Once, going twice. All right, we've closed public comment. We're bringing them, oh. Yes, sir. You got it in right after. Twice and a half.
It's my first time, so I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but my wife had just spoke to you. My name is Kurt Schottenheimer. I live at 1007 South Washington Avenue, and been here about a year in Royal Oak and love the area. We just have come across a situation here where, and it is listed down here below, where you're looking to make an adjustment on 1003 South Washington Avenue. And again, I just wanted to, you know, make the comment that, you know, obviously, anytime you move into a building, and you've been there, and all of a sudden, they're trying to get approval to put other housing beside you, and make it higher than you, and take your views and those type of things away, that's where my, you know, concern is and disappointment is, and hopefully, that does not take place. Also, the other part is, there's supposed to be retail on the first floor, and now I understand that that may not be the case. It's no longer a part of it. So these things are getting changed, and again, those are things that are, you know, certainly not what I want, or what I was getting into. It's very selfish on my part, obviously, but I don't, you know, just, that's the main, main concern that we have, you know, things that are changing and so forth. And again, just like to let you know that I know a lot of people at our address in our area there, as that development starts to come together, and it's been in, as you all probably know, it's been in, you know, a long time coming, because it's started to get built 10 years ago, and we've just finally got five, you know, owners up on the third floor. So just would appreciate any consideration for that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schottenheimer. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak here tonight? All right. We're going to bring the meeting back up to this side of the table. We're going to close public comment. Which brings us to item number seven, the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Dubac.
I'd like to amend the agenda, add an item or an update on city manager retirement. I'll move for approval of the agenda with that amendment.
Motion by Commissioner Dubac, and I heard a second by Commissioner Macy for the modified agenda, which is the agenda that we have presented in front of us tonight, with item number 17, addition city manager retirement discussion. The discussion on the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda for discussion? Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Consent agenda now consists of claims from June 18th to June 21st, 2019, approval of purchase orders, Treasury Department request to fill vacancy, approval of renewal personnel property assessment administrative services, approval of high-intensity drug trafficking area sub-recipient agreement, approval of farmer's market management agreement, award of professional engineering services, Campbell Road signal timing, contract modification to contract SPB ENG 03003 Star Dream Sculpture Inspection and Maintenance, approval of license agreement with William Beaumont Hospital for Coolidge Highway Right-Away, request for valet agreement at Bar Louis, approval of license agreement, sign in landscaping, sing development, approval of Oakland County West Now Virus Fund Program grant, approval of the use of cooperative purchasing contract furnishings at the new city hall and police station, retail pet store sales ordinance, second reading, illegal entry ordinance, second reading, approval of the agreement of towing, storage, and impoundment services, and receive and file non-action items, which include notice of earned grant 2019 Southeast Michigan Resilience Fund. Any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to number item, or number nine on our agenda tonight, which is the approval of third amendments to the fiscal year 2018-19 budgets. Ms. Rudd.
Good evening, mayor, city commissioners. This is the final budget amendment for fiscal year 1819. I would like to make a modification to the general fund based on something that was added to the agenda, the city manager's retirement. I would like to add some monies for banks, since his retirement will be June 30th. Any banks paid out will accrue back to 1819. So I would like, when I go through this, make that modification for that purpose. If you'd like, I'd just go over the more significant items then?
Yeah.
Okay. The general fund, in total, with the changes to revenues and expenditures, the total use of fund balance will go to approximately $4.7 million. The significant items are an increase in local community stabilization revenue, that's the personal property tax of approximately $200,000. And then also, we received the Michigan Drug Court Grant that the probation department is using at approximately $100,000. And then on the expenditure side, some projects that we are not incurring, yet we had budgeted in 1819, was organizational study at $85,000, the cable truck repairs at $50,000, and then the master plan at $200,000. The adjustment for the paid time off bank that I just spoke of, I think we should add about $60,000 back in there. Parks, or excuse me, Recreation and Culture, increase of about $87,000. That's for personnel costs that were higher than budgeted, and the DPS director says that's for various functions that they serve this year, or the current year. And then engineering personnel costs, increase about $79,000. This was work that they could not allocate to a specific project, so that, so the engineering cost center in the general fund gets hit with those costs. And then the environmental sustainability plan was not performed, so a reduction of $75,000 for that. And the major street fund, total use of fund balance is increasing to about $1.6 million. The most significant item there is the $1 million transfer to local streets. We discussed that during the budget work sessions, that was going to be anticipated due to the significant amount of local street work that the engineering department is performing. Then on local streets, the most significant line item there is the million dollars coming in. However, use of fund balance is decreasing about $1.2 million, but it's fully anticipated that in fiscal year 1920, that extra million dollars is going to be utilized. That came from the major street fund. Public safety, we've got some unclaimed property, $41,000, and the revenue that came in, and then the fire department's personnel costs for medical costs increased pretty close to that amount, $41,000. So that's the offset, and that's due to the 90-10 change on the medical costs. Brownfield Redevelopment Fund, increased property taxes of about $290,000, that we have offset reimbursements. State Construction Code Fund, the most significant items there, permit revenue and interest revenue increasing about $567,000. On the expenditure side, we have transfers of $289,000 to the retirement fund, which is the pension, and then 40, approximately $48,000 to the retiree healthcare fund. The reason for that is due to, when we had the assumption change and our unfunded liabilities increase for across all funds, this fund has been paying cash, because it has the cash into the trusts. So when the assumptions change, that unfunded liability also increased to the State Construction Code Fund, rather than they, rather than we amortize it like we do the rest of the funds, we pay cash from the State Construction Code over to those trusts. So that's the lump sum payment. Then the animal shelter, quickly, donations are up about, increase about $29,000, as well as the dog pound fees and sales of about $10,000. And personnel costs are increasing about $18,000. The good news here is use of fund balance is decreasing about $23,000, for a total use of fund balance of about $26,000 for that fiscal, for this fiscal year. Couple more funds, police grant, significant items, $98,000 in additional DEA forfeitures, $47,000 drug forfeitures, and then Act 32 training grant, about not quite $28,000. And then there was numerous smaller revenue increases. And then on the expenditure side, mostly that is going to the contribution of fund balance. So total contribution of fund balance is about $229,000 for that fund. And then finally, of the funds that the city commission officially adopts is the miscellaneous grants fund. And what had happened there is too much revenues were refunded to the miscellaneous grant funds last year, and we are just transferring $57,000 back to the capital improvement fund. The balance of the items are to funds that the city commission does not officially adopt. I'm not sure if you have any questions. I know they'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Ms. Rudd? Commissioner Perush?
Just one very quick question. Under the State Construction Code Fund, the permit revenues and the amount of increase in those revenues, those are building permit revenues? Is that? That's what the permit?
What type of permits? I'm sorry. Did you say?
In the State Construction Code Fund, the permit revenues, the $407,000, those are building permit revenues? Is that what that source is?
Yes.
Okay. Is it just building permits, or is it also like plumbing, electrical, the subcategories within the building sector?
It could be plumbing and electrical as well.
Okay. Okay. Because that, I mean, we've just gotten information about the number of building permits that we've been issuing, and it's certainly reflected in the revenue, which is what compensates those employees in those departments.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Ms. Rudd? Ms. Macy?
I'm not sure if this is for Ms. Rudd or not. The engineering personnel costs that couldn't be assigned to a department, could you give me a sense of what kind of costs those are that don't get assigned?
That could not be assigned to a project.
Projects.
So if we have a road project, a water main project, and they were not specifically working on that, they were working on more general information, like maybe permits or something, right-of-way permits, or things like that.
Any other questions for Ms. Rudd? Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of all of these.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Rudd. This brings us to item number 10, which is the approval of professional services agreement for de- for development of the downtown park. See, Mr. Rassell is here.
Mayor Commissioners, I believe a little over a month ago, you approved negotiating a contract with MKSK for the development of the downtown park. Tonight is that that contract is presented for your approval.
Questions for Mr. Rassell? Commissioner Macy?
I'm wondering, I'm surprised to see that the design costs don't include, quote unquote, special features. We haven't, the whole point is that we haven't made a design and decided we'll be in this park yet, and for them to, from the beginning, say, if these three things are included, we're going to charge you more than half a million dollars, is a surprise to me. And I'm wondering if that was a surprise to you, too?
No, it was not. Once again, they have allocated for a small performance stage and a small restroom. A small restroom may handle a half dozen people. If we just say we want a restaurant, a restroom that handles 125 people an hour, or something like that, or if we want to attach it to the farmer's market instead of a standalone small facility in the park, that would be additional. Same thing with an amphitheater, a small performance stage. If we want to build a full-size amphitheater, that would be an additional cost. But once again, we haven't made a decision on those items yet.
It's just a surprise to me that the design itself would be an increasingly, significantly increased cost such that it wouldn't be included. We've got a $500,000, $440,000 cost for a two-acre park. It just seems like anything we want to put in that park should be included. It's my, it's my feeling.
Commissioner Prush?
My recollection is that not only is this cost that's been negotiated consistent with what the park's task force set out and established as what was appropriate, but also the scope of the project. And I think it was my recollection of our discussion, it was, that it was very clear that these additional items, like an expanded restroom and water feature, or full-size amphitheater, were outside the scope of the contract, and they would be extras. That's my recollection of our discussions, and our, my recollection of our recommendation to go forward with this. So that, that doesn't surprise me.
Move approval of the contract?
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Prush. Discussion? Commissioner Levaser?
And this may be a question best directed to Commissioner Prush, but, you know, my understanding is the committee vetted various architects and made the recommendation of this one. At the time that you were vetting those, those different companies, was there numbers provided, dollars provided by those companies as to what they anticipated the cost would be?
Yes. Yes.
From a comparative standpoint, and forgive me, it's been a month since we looked at that, was this the low bid? Was this in the middle? What was this?
My recollection, and I should have brought my notes tonight, my recollection, and maybe Commissioner Douglas will correct me if I'm wrong, if her recollection is different than mine, my recollection is that these guys are right in the middle.
That, that is my information as well. It was not, they were not the high bid, but they were definitely not the low bid.
The high bid was at like $550,000. The low bid was still maybe just over $400,000, maybe right around $400,000. And then the other two were kind of right in the middle. So the, this particular group was right in the, in between the two extremes.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yeah, I think when we discussed, you know, when we came back with the recommendation to award this contract, what we had talked about was that there was a cluster of them, and the ones that were kind of in our, our top two or three were all in that same cluster. They weren't any, they weren't the high outlier, and the low one wasn't even an outlier, it was just, you know, the lowest bid, but it still wasn't far from the cluster. They were all kind of in the same ballpark.
I remember that discussion falling into who do we think is going to do, you know, who had the best approach and idea, considering they were all kind of bounced around in the same range. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, and staff did spend a great deal of time before the task force meant, met to select a contractor, breaking out their expenses and figuring out what their core cost was and what any extras were. So I, as Commissioner Prush said, am not surprised that that's how they priced it out.
Commissioner Prush?
And it was consistent, I think, with almost all the other people who submitted their proposal, was they said essentially the same thing, that in terms of pretty significant special features, that would be significant, not only in terms of design, but also in terms of cost to build, that was outside the scope. So this is not an unusual provision that they're putting in here. I think just about all the other proposed, people who proposed essentially said the same thing, that if you want something really a whole lot bigger here, it's outside the scope of what we're proposing.
Commissioner Macy?
So I don't know if Mr. Rassell's going to be able to go back this far in his mind, but I'm wondering if, for a sense of the scope, if, do you remember how much our contract was with Noah Comfries for Normandy Oaks?
That was, I believe, just short of $300,000.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. I remain confused.
Commissioner Levaser?
Are you able to give us some insights as to why this would be roughly a third or so more expensive than Normandy Oaks?
Well, some of the technical aspect of it being in the downtown and dealing with all the underground utilities in the area, the integration of the, into the other three projects, and open, open turf is much easier to deal with than an urban environment.
Commissioner Prush?
And a couple of the people who were presenting noted that especially, that the engineering, they're, each of them broke out design costs, typical, what you would think of as architectural costs of just being able to draw stuff. But there was also a huge component for all of them for engineering, the engineering of this. And it was because of the nature of where this is, and how they would have to coordinate and take into account, in terms of their design, the utilities and what's underground. As Mr. Rassell said, it's not 50 acres of open space. It is, it's two acres, and there's a heck of a lot of stuff under there. And they, we discovered that when we were building the parking structure. They went to dig the foundation, and they found an enormous sub-basement from some old building that was built a century ago that no one knew was there. And it's very possible that the same thing is going to happen here. So they took that into the account, so the engineering component of their proposal was much larger than, I think, what you would typically have for an open space park like Normandy Oaks. And that bumped up the cost fairly significantly.
Commissioner Macy?
So I find everything you say to be very persuasive, as usual, but I still, I still want to say that for Normandy Oaks, we did get a water feature, a nice, big fancy water feature for less than this. So I still remain a little skeptical.
Commissioner Douglas?
No, I, no. As Mr. Rassell says, I mean, it's a, it's a, you know, 40 acres of what was always a golf course. So you don't have, you know, much underground or much to cope with, even with a water feature, and many of our other features are, you know, natural areas. I mean, I, it totally makes sense that an area this intense, where they have to consider not just the park itself, but like, access to the park, I mean, how it will interface with the streets, how people will approach it. It's, it's smaller, but it's harder.
And arguably, a lot more people visiting it per acre than, you know, Normandy, which, to Commissioner Douglas's point of view, I would ask, or I would think that that would require a whole new set of lenses to look at how to design and develop the park access entrances, how things balance with existing buildings and structures, shadow lights, sound, all of these things. Commissioner Prush?
The other thing to keep in mind is that we only received five proposals, and the lowest proposal was 380, 390. It was very close to 400,000. So even amongst the proposals that we got, we're not looking at 200,000, because it just didn't come in the door. So, you know, we dealt with what we had.
Commissioner Macy?
Certainly, not meaning to be critical of the committee, which I think did a fantastic job, and I was excited, really excited about this project when I saw it. I'm just, I'm just was surprised, like I said, by the fact that there are some exclusions that were not excluded in a previous larger park, which I understand that there are differences for. But that said, I'm going to be voting for this, and I expect to see a really awesome design to this park.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
And just to the point of the complexity, one of the things we talked about with them at length was the difficulty of threading the needle on this park, given the size and given resident expectations, you know? We want it to be beautiful and passive and tranquil. We also want it to be, you know, a dynamic, exciting, urban park. And to your point, yes, for this money, I think we, we should be expecting an A-plus product, because that's, that's what they sold us. So I think it's up to all of us to make sure we're holding them accountable for these dollars. But I fully expect that it's, it's worth it, because this is the target they all came in at, and the complexity and the challenge in front of them is grand.
Well, we have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Designer for the downtown park. This brings us to item number 11, which is the approval of the tentative agreement with the Royal Oak Police Officers Association. I guess Mr. Gillum will, yeah, Mr. Gillum, I'll hand it over to you.
Mayor, Forney and City Commissioners, as indicated in the memo from Mr. Vandilar, the city's bargaining team was able to reach a tentative agreement with the Royal Oak Police Officers Association, and a contract covering a two-year period. The first year from 19, 2000, July 1 of this year to June 30 of next year, provides for a 2.5% wage increase, which is consistent with the pattern of the agreements that have been reached with the city's other bargaining units. This agreement, however, does contain a second year, that is from 2020 to 2021, and that includes specifically a 2% wage increase on July 1, and then an additional 1% increase on January 1 of the following year of 2021. It mirrors the reduction in the employee contribution to healthcare costs from 20% to 10%. There are also a couple incentives for the second-tier employees, that are for the, for the newer police department employees who are not covered by the city's defined benefit program, but the defined contribution program. If you have any questions, we can try to answer those for you, but we would recommend approval of the tentative agreement.
Questions for Mr. Gillum? Commissioner Levaser?
Just to clarify, because I believe that the officers are under a defined benefit pension, and I just wanted to clarify on that.
That is correct. The tier-two officers get, there's, they don't get healthcare in retirement, is what they don't get.
I'm sorry, that was a mistake on my part, you're correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Gillum? Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval of the contract?
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. I'll just add that I'm very grateful for the Royal Oak Police Officers Association for all the work they do, all the men and women in uniform, and, you know, I think this contract is a step in the right direction. And again, we're very grateful for their cooperation, their willingness and openness to enter into negotiations with the city with, you know, what we think here is a very fair contract. So I just want to, behalf of the city, if anyone's watching, offer our appreciation for all the work you do. Okay. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to item number 12, which is the approval of May Traffic Committee Resolutions. I think I feel Mr. Callahan behind me.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Traffic committee was held on May the 28th. The deputy chairperson, Rick Karloski, chaired that meeting. We had five items on the agenda. One of them had no action taken on it. I will go over them quickly. We had a request for a stop sign on Northwood Boulevard, and the recommendation was to deny the request, but install all ways signs below each of the stop signs at that intersection. We had a request for a stop sign on South Alexander at Second Street. The recommendation was to not install a stop sign there. We had a do-not-block-intersection sign, signs requested on North Main Street, just north of Normandy Road, and the recommendation was to not install those signs at that location. And it was also requested that we look at the intersection of Shenandoah and Glenwood due to the pedestrian crossing there and the, and the speeding that the resident requested us to measure on the street, and the recommendation was to install some crosswalk markings there, even though this is a residential street. Install pedestrian crosswalk signs and install the all-way signs at the stop signs at the three streets that are, come together in that area.
Any questions for Mr. Callahan? Commissioner Levaser?
I had some residents on Northwood approached me recently, and they expressed some concerns with the traffic speed on that road. I presume that's what the stop sign was all about, trying to slow down traffic on Northwood?
The, the requests, the requester indicated that they felt that people were running the stop sign that is there, so there is a stop sign there already. They just wanted a second stop sign, one on each side of the road, because it's a one-way boulevard. And that's not normal. It's not in the Michigan manual to do that, and, and if they aren't stopping for the one that you can see very visibly, what is the second stop sign going to do? So stop signs aren't necessarily put in either to control speeding. You look at other ways to control speeding, and we do have some plans for some traffic calming on Northwood when we do pave that road. Hopefully, that will curb some of the speeding. The speeds are in the 30 mile per hour range for this street, which is signed for 25. So that's a little problematic, but we don't think the stop sign would help with what they really want to have happen there.
Thank you. Commissioner Prush?
There are a number of other boulevards in the city where people think it's okay to drive 40, 45 miles an hour just because it's, it's a boulevard. And they don't typically have signs on them indicating what the speed limit is, which is usually 25 miles per hour. Is there a reason why we don't put those kinds of speed indicators on streets like Vincetta or Northwood or so on, where, you know, people may not be aware that the speed limit is 25? It may not slow them down, but perhaps it might give some people some pause?
I believe we do have 25 mile per hour speed limits on the Vincettas and Northwoods. I think that's in the report as well, back in the details. We, they are considered major roads, so we will sign them with an actual speed limit sign. Most of the time, we wouldn't normally put a speed limit sign on a residential street. This is a residential area, but Northwood is a major road in Royal Oak.
Okay. I'll have to go out and look again, but I can't recall the location, various locations, at least on Vincetta, which is one that I go up and down an awful lot.
You'll see them mostly as you pull off the other major roads, like off of 12 Mile. For Northwood, you'll see them over by Crooks and down by the north, by the Woodward end.
Okay.
But you won't see any ones further down the road.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yeah, it appears that after reviewing these requests and hearing from residents, all of the motions before us were adopted unanimously by the Traffic Committee?
Yes.
There's no minority report to give on any of these?
No.
Okay. All right. I'll move for the resolutions as proposed by the Traffic Committee.
Motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Levaser. Discussion. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
You're welcome.
That brings us to item number 13, the Central Business District Parking Analysis on Street Handicap Parking. Mr. Twain?
Mayor, members of the commission, staff was asked to look at on-street handicap spaces in the CBD area. As part of that request, for staff to look at it, the item was referred to the DDA as the city's parking committee. It went through the DDA's Infrastructure Committee and onto the DDA Board for their recommendation to the commission. At this time, the DDA, as you'll see, is recommending that the only on-street handicap parking spots that be identified are in the areas where we have angle parking. In that regard, the propose, after that meeting, staff, engineering looked at potential areas where that could occur, and came up with some suggested locations where we lost as few spots as possible. I believe the report indicates we're losing 12 angled spaces in order to add a total of 24, but four of those are associated with the alley and the deck, so they're not new. I mean, they are new, but in a new area. So as part of the report, you'll see where those angled spots are recommended. They're primarily near inter- those angled spots are recommended. They're primarily near intersections where there are curb drops, where there are potentially hashed-out spaces for other reasons. They weren't either adequate or not to be a parking spot, so we didn't lose a parking spot, but could be used for the area as part of a handicap layout. So the recommendation in front of you tonight from both staff and the DDA is to have on-street handicap spots added to an additional 20 locations. And there's a resolution, if you concur with the DDA and staff, to have those added. I guess the one thing I would also clarify is we may need to lower some of the meter heights at those locations as well. So I think that's the only other thing that we'd have to look at on a site-by-site basis.
Questions to Twain.
Commissioner LaVassar. I noticed in a number of our service lots that the handicap parking is, there are no meters there. It's provided, I guess, free. And I'm just wondering whether there was discussion by the DDA and whether the street parking in this respect should be free as well.
Well, it wasn't part of the recommendation, but it was my feeling that, based on the discussion, was that the meters would be charged meters. You would still pay for those activities. I believe some of the lots that may not have meters in them are potentially kiosk lots though, too. But no, I believe based on their discussion was that those angled spots would continue to have meters and be charged.
Yeah, the lots that I specifically took note of this evening were the one right here, kitty corner across the street, as well as the one behind our police station, which I don't believe those are kiosks. They're meters by, no, there were no meters at the handicap spots.
Yeah, no, there was no, I mean, I believe the intent was to leave those as free in those locations.
Okay. So basically, there was no discussion one way or the other by the DDA on that topic?
Right. When the kiosks get put in at the alley, off, currently, all 19 of those spots are free because the kiosks haven't been installed yet. But when they are, the intent's to charge. Believe you go into the parking decks, those spots are all charged if you park in them. There's no distinction. It just happens to be in these couple that I believe the meters weren't installed. The meters were actually added in this lot when it used to be limited to city vehicles. It was, there were no meters and it wasn't charged.
Do you have a sense of what the impact would be on the parking fund if we chose not to charge, not to install meters at the handicap spots on the street?
I don't have an idea of what that would be. It would clearly vary by location. I would think Seventh Street between Main and Washington would be different than the ones by the post office off of center that are being added. So it would vary, but I don't have any indication of numbers.
Commissioner Dubb.
Yeah, I guess to that point, I think it's certainly worth a conversation. I would say, you know, I worked for a disability rights organization for about five years, and accessibility was obviously one of our major focuses. And the cost issue to some folks might matter, but just because someone has a disability doesn't necessarily mean they lack ability to pay. But more importantly, the reason that we have meters is to keep people cycling through so that spots are available for the next people. So we'd want the accessible spaces not to be tied up by single users all day long. We want there also still to be an incentive to cycle people through on the street parking. If you're staying for a long period of time, then, you know, we would encourage people to park in the decks. So I think it would be, we're doing a good thing by putting the street parking in, but then if we allow it just to be, you know, used for the entire day because there is not that incentive to cycle it through, then we're actually doing a disservice to the other people who would like to be able to park near where they're going because they have a disability and need the accessibility accommodation. So I'm open to the conversation, but I think we want to think about the practical reasons that we have the meters. It's not, you know, the revenue generation of the parking fund is one thing, but it's also to keep people cycling through those spots because they're supposed to be short-term stay spots. And to that point, I noted that the committee had some concerns with installing parallel parking because it's not technically an ADA compliance space, whereas if we just put up a sign and painted the curb blue there and said this is an accessible space because we can't have the accessible aisle, which is true, but, you know, Main Street does have a good number of businesses and not every person with a placard is necessarily, you know, exiting and entering a vehicle, you know, with a wheelchair or needs the access aisle. Some people have disabilities where, you know, it's just, it's a mobility issue. So you have MS and you're in pain, and traveling a shorter distance is a reasonable accommodation for some folks. So I think there is value in installing some reserved spaces on Main Street to allow for immediate accessibility to those. And I actually, I thought that's where our conversation was beginning. The angle parking makes sense because that's where you get the aisle. But other than it not being true blue ADA compliant, but there is a certain benefit to people with disabilities who don't necessarily need the access aisle. Is there a reason to not do the parallel parking? Or was it just because you go, it's not ADA compliant?
I don't know how you would designate them as ADA spots when they're not ADA compliant. You may be able to designate them as reserved spots for people with handicap placards, but I don't believe, and this may get into the police chief and Mr. Gillum from a legal standpoint, whether or not designating something as ADA or using the standard signage for handicap spaces is something that should be done. Two of the members of the committee that reviewed it, who are architects, said if they were told to do that as part of site plans, they wouldn't put their seals on it because of the liability associated with it. And I believe that staff's position is that we would not recommend to you that spots that are clearly not ADA compliant be designated in any way as handicap spots.
Okay, so there's a potential legal issue there.
I don't have firsthand information, but I've heard secondhand that the city of Birmingham is running into problems by doing that exact thing. So.
And Ann Arbor. Commissioner Perush.
To add to this specific discussion, the city of Ferndale has a space, courtesy space, on 9 Mile on the south side, maybe a block or two west of Woodward. And I took a picture of it a long time ago and then erased it, of course. They have, the space itself is a regular-sized space, but it bumps up against one of their tree islands that bumps out into the parking area, sidewalk bump out. So they have some blue striping, what would be in front of the nose of the car, and also some striping behind the car just to give the person who has that kind of a vehicle more space to maneuver. But clearly, there's no striping on the side so that you couldn't use it for a wheelchair-access mechanism. So Ferndale has one. I don't know what kinds of issues they've had with their parking space, and I only have seen one, and it's on 9 Mile on the south side. And it's not designated, I don't think officially, as a handicap parking space, although I think it might have the little wheelchair symbol on it. But whether they call it a courtesy space for, I don't know what they call it. And I also don't know whether it's metered. But that's another locality that we might look into to see whether or not they have found a way to make it work for them, given the fact that apparently in other communities, it's problematic.
Commissioner Douglas.
So I wonder what Mr. Gillum has heard about Birmingham. I'm sitting here looking at a screenshot of a parking place on Maple Road in Birmingham that's a normal-sized parking space, maybe a little bit bigger, with just blue lines on it but not striping, with a meter and a sign that says, has a handicap, you know, symbol on it, and it says, "Reserve parking only." And I spoke with the city manager about this probably in, what is this, June, maybe April or May? And he, at that time at least, said that as long as the city was satisfying its legal requirements for genuinely accessible parking elsewhere, that it has installed these sort of courtesy spaces. And at that point, he hadn't had any pushback on it. So I'm wondering what the objection might be. And I'm putting you on the spot, so.
Yeah, no, again, the information I had was because spaces were being posted as for handicapped use, but they did not comply with the ADA. So I can look further into it if you like, so.
Yeah, I, as I say, as of whatever, earlier this, in the spring, Birmingham was doing this in a few select areas. And they, like us, have angle parking on Woodward, Old Woodward there, and have installed angle parking, truly accessible spaces there. But they do have several of these, what I'm going to call courtesy spaces, you know, elsewhere in the downtown. And maybe we don't make them blue with a blue handicap sign. Maybe we make them green with a please be nice and let, you know, people with handicaps park here. It just seems to me that there's some room for generosity here.
Yeah. Last year, I had the privilege of meeting with a resident named Joan Johnson. And Joan, we agreed to meet up for lunch. And exactly what Commissioner Dubb is saying, Commissioner Perush is saying is, it was very helpful to understand, because we talked about ADA spaces. We talked about some of the limitations in a historical downtown. And she really kind of elevated the idea that, well, not every disability is the same. So you have folks that are in wheelchairs, and she said, "I'm not in a wheelchair," but, you know, with some arthritic issues and things like that, it's, you know, very difficult to, you know, once a person with that condition exits a car, to walk far. Whereas, nothing to take away against anyone in a wheelchair, but once you exit the vehicle, you get in your chair, you're a little bit more mobile than somebody that, you know, may have a walker or may have a cane or some other, you know, you're still walking. So it was very helpful, very interesting. And we did talk about some of these ideas about painting spots blue, you know, kind of like the expected mother, like maybe we don't have a legal, you know, definition, but, you know, the honor system with people, you know, like the 30-minute parking spots that we have. And when we were talking about that, we kind of incorporated this into the conversation. I know at the time Birmingham was just kind of, you know, underway with what they were doing related to these spots, is my understanding, and we kind of wanted to wait and see. I still think it's a worthwhile conversation. I'm okay taking the risk of painting something there and, you know, where we think we can fit a few of these on Main Street. And if somebody comes back and sues us or does whatever, I'm sure that it's not, you know, punitive in nature. We would just have to reverse it. But I do think it's worth a legal inquiry. Is there a way that they're doing it? I don't know that there would be strong objections from people, you know, to say, "Oh, you're making our beautiful vibrant downtown even more accessible and walkable and navigable." So we did have that conversation, and I know, I can't speak for the city manager, he's not here right now, but part of it was some of these conditions and kind of waiting and seeing a little bit related to, you know, at least the parallel spots and the non-angle spots, what could be done. But I do want to give a shout out to Joan because it was very helpful. She reached out, wanted to express some concerns, and wanted to, you know, educate me on, you know, some of the accessibility issues we had in downtown. And it was very helpful and fruitful, and I learned quite a bit.
And I will point out that she now serves on the senior task force.
Yes, she does. She does. She does.
Commissioner Perush.
I'll move approval of these recommendations.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion.
Do we want to actually add to that motion directing staff to explore the addition of some non-compliant but courtesy spots on Main Street?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that a motion?
I'll move amendment of the motion to add that.
Say goodbye, Commissioner Perush. So now we're voting on the amendment to add to the original motion. All right? My brain's not fried yet. Discussion. Commissioner Perush.
I was going to make a second motion to do that, but we can mush it all together. That's fine.
I have another motion, but I may want to hold off on that.
You know, the human can only see three dimensions, Commissioner LaVassar. If we go beyond that. So you have one more. Once we get into four, it might be hard to cut.
I'll hold off for the moment, and we can vote on this motion.
Okay.
We'll go from there.
Perfect. All right. Any discussion on this one? If not, a call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The amendment passes. Okay. Commissioner LaVassar.
I would move that we amend that we refer back to the DDA as our parking committee to review whether or not we should charge for these handicap street spots and to give us the positives and negatives and recommendations in that respect.
Motion by Commissioner LaVassar. Is there a second?
A second there.
Say goodbye, Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion. All right, now this is also an amendment to the original motion. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we have the original motion with two amendments. Amendments being, let's look at those courtesy spots where we can't fit them in on angle. The other amendment is to kick back a request to the DDA, which is our parking committee in town, to look at, you know, the pros and cons of charging for parking, for handicap-accessible parking at street level. And the original motion, which is presented in front of us. Here we go. That's the, that's the big one. All right. Any discussion on this?
Think we forget it.
Yeah. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Just a real quick, Mr. Twain, as it stands right now, even without the addition of the courtesy spots, our downtown now will have, what is it, 150% at least on-street of what we are required to have for handicap parking if that requirement were to apply to a...
Well, I believe we indicated, we had somewhere in the neighborhood of, yeah, 3% and the statute requires 2.
Yeah.
So, little over 3% with just these angle spots.
Yeah, that's good. That's a marked improvement in, you know, planning for the future. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Twain. I'm sure you're still going to be here for item number 14.
A couple more.
Which is the Planning Commission recommendation on rezoning 1003 South Washington Avenue First Street.
That's correct. You do have a recommendation from the Planning Commission to rezone the property of 1003 South Washington from mixed use to the planned unit development. The petitioner is proposing to remove the existing jewelry store, the former jewelry store, Chin's Jewelry, and then construct a four-story building with 48 residential units, 15 of which are studio units, 24 are one-bedroom units, and nine are two-bedroom units under the proposed plan. They range in size from roughly 512 square feet to a little bit over 1,000 square feet, depending on the unit type. They are proposing to provide parking in the sense of 63 spaces below the building and underground. That equates to about 1.3 spaces per unit. And you do have the Planning Commission's recommendation for some of the contingencies and the items they addressed. It's a four-story building, as I said, it's about 43 feet in height. The Planning Commission did see it as a preliminary review in February of this year and as a final review in May of this year. And both of those were conducted with public hearings, and the Planning Commission's vote was, I believe, 6 to 1 recommending approval of the PUD request.
Questions from Mr. Twain. Mr. Macy.
We heard from some people at Public Comment tonight concerned about the height of the building and how that would affect the views of the house. And after that, I went to the Google Maps, and I'm looking around, trying to figure it out. Do you have a sense of what, if this came up at Planning Commission as well, what houses or what homes are being blocked by this?
Based on some of the comments this evening, at least one of them would be the condominiums that are being retrofitted or finished, the building to the south. I didn't catch the other address, so I'm not sure where that one was referring to. There is an alley. Three sides of this are surrounded by public rights of way. The north side, the west is Washington. I believe the north side is Hudson. And then there's a public alley to the east side. The south side of the building actually, though, has a window well that provides lights and lighting and natural light into the proposed parking area. So the building in that area actually sets back from the property line, except in the very southwest and southeast corner where they'll have stairways and stairwells. And I believe it lines up somewhat with the stairwell that's in the building to the south. So I'm not sure where they're referring to having their views blocked. so I'm not sure where they're referring to having their views blocked.
Second question I had was about, they also mentioned no first-floor retail, which is something we've been seeing quite a bit of when these come before us, is that requirement or request to have it be first-floor retail, why not in this case?
Well, they do have, and the Planning Commission looks at that, and I've had two of the members that were at the meeting here. The first floor in the northwest corner, while it's not proposed as retail, I believe it does provide what the intent is to have not-stilted buildings with parking under them. The intent appears to be, and my read of the Planning Commission is to have something that comes to the street front that makes the presence of the building have a street presence, whether that's retail or the common area that's proposed as part of this building. Again, I don't wanna speak for each individual Planning Commission member, but that's my read of why they are satisfied with this layout.
Commissioner LaVassar? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Macy.
Then it seems in this case there was a minority report with Mr. Goddick. Is there summary, succinct summary of what his concerns were with this?
Other than what's on the video, no, we don't make comments on it, and I don't recall what his objections were.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner LaVassar?
I seem to recall that Mr. Goddick's concern was the sightlines coming off of Hudson onto Washington and being able to see past this building, and...
I didn't get, it sounded like perhaps the footprint was reduced a little bit going from February to May, but was it otherwise addressed?
Yeah, the building, between February and May, the building, particularly on the first floor, was moved, had greater setbacks. It still didn't provide 10 feet as the ordinance initially talks, but I believe along Washington, there's about four foot of a setback from the property line. So then you have the sidewalk and the grassy area between the curb. And then from Hudson, I don't believe it's quite three feet, it's probably, you know, two feet 10 inches on the first floor. So it did, from that corner, move it back in that area.
Okay. Now, it looked to me that, to the immediate east of this, it's a single-family home across the alleyway. Is that your understanding?
That's, I'm not positive, but if looking at it, I believe so, but it appears to me there's a large wall there, as I recall.
All right, okay. Now, this is four stories, it's not a tapered four stories, it's basically, on that east wall, it's four stories high, it's not tapered from a lower level going up toward the center.
That's correct. It's a flat, basically a flat roof.
Okay. I didn't get, and I watched the videos, I watched the February Planning Commission video, I watched the May Planning Commission video. I didn't get a good sense of the changes, other than a slight change in the footprint in the project. I know in February there was a lot of talk of the water runoff and how that was gonna be accomplished. Was there anything further that you're aware of, as far as how that was being handled?
Not in terms of the stormwater runoff, other than it obviously has to comply with city ordinance. We generally, at the Planning Commission, don't get engineered drawings, so that's not a required submission, so I can't tell you how they're going to comply or even if they are. One of the large cost items, in my opinion, for them will be to figure that out, to the point where whether they can do underground parking and put stormwater below it and still have a viable project, a question, this may never get built.
Yeah, but my understanding is they were playing on, not necessarily, and they basically have two levels of parking underneath, is what, but the plan wasn't to put stormwater retention under that, but basically to put it up and over to the side and have pumps push the water up to those pipes until it can be released into the...
Again, it's still gonna have to be retained on their side.
Yeah.
It can't be pumped elsewhere, whether they're going to place it in pipes or store it in some other fashion, we just don't have that level of detail at this point. But they do have to, before they can get a building permit, submit something to engineering that shows how they're gonna do it, comply with that stormwater runoff ordinance calculation and design it as such.
Okay, the parking here, my understanding, unless it changed from February to May, it was roughly 1.3 parking spots per unit?
That's correct.
And are zoning otherwise requires two per unit?
Zoning ordinance for residential, basically everywhere other than the CBD, requires one, two for every unit.
All right, we've had some exceptions we've made where we've dropped down to, say, 1.5?
We've probably had several that are in this area. One of the things we're doing for the Planning Commission is looking at parking requirements for multifamily developments, particularly by unit mix or type, as well as location. We're looking at the heights requirement. The 30-foot requirement is a requirement that came out of the ordinance when it was written in 2001.
I'm sorry.
And it was across the board.
The 30-foot requirement?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you've lost me there, what is...
Well, I'm just talking of all the things the Planning Commission is asking us to look at in terms of multifamily developments, it's, they've asked us to look at parking. And there are several that are in the neighborhood of 1.3 to 1.5 that have been approved since 2002. I believe there's one on 11 Mile that was approved at one space per unit, because it was all studio. So I believe the Planning Commission is looking at unit mix when they're reviewing projects and making a recommendation on waivers.
Hudson, immediately adjacent to this, between Washington and Main, I think that's not currently permit-only parking?
I don't have that right off the top of my head.
I know this is the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Do you make recommendations to the Planning Commission leading up to that, or did you make a recommendation in this instance?
Well, staff's recommendation is are generally a review of the projects and a overview of what's being proposed, an overview of where their deviations are and sense of things that the Planning Commission needs to consider. And we recommend changes to the site plan. We don't get into recommending specifically whether to approve or deny a use. And some of that goes back to old opinions from a legal counsel where if we recommended approval and the Planning Commission denied it, we're then testifying for the developer. So we don't provide a recommendation of yes or no. We do give them an indication, probably based on the number of items we point out to them to consider, whether it's a good idea to go forth or not.
How many deviations from the current zoning is being proposed here in this?
Probably the easiest way to look at it would be to look at the resolution where, item B, where it has one through nine that are listed. Those, that generally is touching on everything that's not specifically in compliance. 48 units that wouldn't be allowed under the current multifamily standard. As we talked about, a height currently is 30 feet in the ordinance, this project is 43. The setbacks of the building, it talks about for multifamily being 10 feet. Those, in this case, vary depending on the size, so we didn't list them there, but simply reference the plan. The site clearance triangle at the intersections of the driveway in the building was an issue. The number of parking spaces, and then there's provisions regarding the height and width and ratio of the building, the amount of landscaping, and then the amount of screening and buffering and some things. So those are all items that are somewhat of the discretion of the Planning Commission as it goes forward.
So that's on the second page of the PDF, and essentially, essentially nine, nine variations from the current zoning, if I'm understanding correctly?
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else, questions for Mr. Twing? Commissioner Douglas?
I will comment on this. As Mr. Twing indicated, the Planning Commission has asked the staff to take a look at our multi, the zoning for multifamily in Royal Oak. Given contemporary practices and changes in the industry and in demand, we find that our zoning is very limiting in, you know, what customers want these days. And so we find ourselves facing PUDs for units that are strictly residential, and our PUD ordinance does not say a planned unit development must be mixed-use. It may solely be residential, and this is one of the workarounds that developers are using along with conditional zoning, to be able to build units that people want, that meet contemporary standards. And so I think we're looking at changing our multifamily zoning to make it match today's demand, and once we do that, then we draw a line in the sand and we turn down PUDs and we turn down conditional zoning, because we've created a playing, a level playing field, and we take the burden off the staff, because every time they go through a PUD or a conditional rezoning process, that has to go through the planning department. But once we establish our zoning and make sure that it meets those contemporary standards, they go right to the building department and start getting their building permits, which eases the burden on our staff. So that's kind of the long-term goal there.
We're working on it. Any other discussion?
Is there a motion in the floor?
I'll move approval of the proposal.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Mr. Macy? Discussion? Commissioner LaVassar?
In my opinion, and I appreciate that the developer wants to jam as much into this parcel as he or she can, but I simply believe this is just too big for the parcel involved. It's just too close to other single-family residential. It's not providing for adequate parking. I can't support it as is.
Commissioner Gibbs?
And I have to sort of echo that, because I believe, just because of the height requirement or the height of the building as proposed, is so much greater than the surrounding areas that if the top floor was knocked off, I think that would be something I could favor, but as it stands right now with the lack of parking, it's not something I can approve.
I guess I'll just, oh, Commissioner Perush?
I just wanna speak to the height issue. I mean, there is a building that's relatively new next door, that's not quite complete, that has the same height, it's four stories, but it is tapered. It is set back from the street in a lot of different ways, and it's certainly taller on the alley side, which is the side that faces the single-family homes. But on the other hand, it tapers on the Washington side so that it doesn't look like this blocky block, four stories tall. And I think the design of that particular building fits in much better with the design of the neighborhood than this does, where it's, you've got almost a full lot line full of four-story height. That's the concern I have, and perhaps that lends itself to the objection that it's just too dense of a project for such a, the size of the lot. I don't know, I don't know how I'm gonna vote on this, this one's a tough one. Because I know it does, it responds to market demand, and there are people who are interested in living in studio apartments and so on in this area, and there's a great deal of demand for it. But I'm not so sure this design is appropriate.
Commissioner Dubac?
So, I mean, I'm struggling, I don't not like the building, I think it's, you know, appropriate for where it's at, because there's a big building right next to it, but I guess what I'm struggling with is that we're making all the concessions, and I just don't know what leverage we have. Like, when we're looking at a PUD, we're looking at rezonings, so someone can build what they want, which is meeting market demand. I mean, so we don't have first-floor retail, which I think we would prefer. We don't have, I mean, other green elements of the building, so they're just building detention, which means all the water ends up in our system, right? There's no diversion that we're asking for. This is an opportunity to do that. Like, is there an opportunity to negotiate some of those concessions that we think are in the public interest, just beyond having a nice new building as opposed to a parking lot? But is that, do we have that leverage to negotiate some accommodations on the part of the builder beyond the city, just retrofitting our rules to meet their needs?
I can let Commissioner Douglas answer that question.
Or Mr. Twing, I mean, we've, they've already agreed to put underground parking, which is extraordinary, and honestly, I'm gonna be surprised if they actually pull it off. They did pull the perimeter of the building back, they were, their proposal did have their small balconies out over the public right-of-way, which we do not allow, so we forced them to pull their envelope back in, as it were. And the challenge is building in a built-out city. You know, we've got small sites and we've got weird properties next door, and there are always going to be, there's always going to be give and take. I do wanna point out, and I'm gonna put Mr. Twing on the spot with his prodigious memory here, we have approved a substantial multifamily development on the site of the former Buttons rental. And how tall is that, Mr. Twing? Sorry?
Oh, it's at least four stories.
It's at least four stories or five. So the Planning Commission, and I think that's a, is that a PUD?
It's gonna have to be, could have been, could have been a conditional rezoning.
So the Planning Commission is, I mean, being consistent here in this corridor, looking at four-story apartment buildings as being suitable on a street like Washington.
To answer your question, though, yes, as part of PUD, or you can, I won't call it negotiate, but when you're being asked to grant additional densities, additional waivers, you can, as part of that, request that other things occur. As part of that review, I would suggest there would be a reason for it as well as part of any recommendation. The Kroger's development on 12 and Stevenson was requested to put in rain gardens and address some other things, so yes, be the short answer, you can. I would, anything that's being requested, though, I would also ask for a reason for it, an articulation for it, why is it needed, so that we have that as part of the record.
I'd also say that on the Planning Commission, when we've looked at specific projects in this corridor, one of the things that it seems, in the business case, for anyone to kind of redevelop some of these properties that are kind of in this awkward, you know, it's not really this high-traffic commercial zone like you get farther north in town. You've got some, I'll say, industrial-type businesses like Buttons and stuff, where, you know, Mr. Button retires, Chuck Button retires, and he has his property and he sells it, and it's really trying to find a little bit more of its identity. We have some nice residential going up in the area. What we found, though, is we've had some deals here where we have been working and negotiating with developers where it's really hard to do that first-floor retail, especially when they have to accommodate all the parking and everything like that. And that's created an issue for a number of projects in this corridor. And for us, there's still, you know, a need to have, you know, some more dense family, multifamily residential properties in this area, we feel. This particular, although it's not, you know, defined as retail, it's the underground parking that I think is, you know, really one of the negotiative items, which helps, you know, create a optic on the street where, you know, might see, like we have on Curry Avenue on 11 Mile, or maybe it's a workout facility, you're not looking at a parking garage, so to speak. And so these are things that we look at and work with the potential interested parties, but there is a, you know, when we look at this area, there are a number of projects that are going up that are four-story, we kind of have a plan for it. You know, repurposing some of these older commercial properties is important as we transition into residential areas, so it's a great buffer to have multifamily versus a high-use, industrial-use, so there is an incentive or a desire on the Planning Commission's end to really make sure that, you know, these properties aren't turned into warehouses and factories and things like that, because they do adjut, but neighborhoods here where there is some residential around. So for us, being able to secure some multifamily residential in this area kind of helps calm that transition out towards the highway. So I won't say it's all us, you know, capitulating to developers' needs, it's also... you know, capitulating to developers' needs. It's also folks coming in and saying, hey, we want to, you know, develop something here that might be in the city's interest as well. But, there are economics at play here, too, to get what you want. So, it's never an easy decision. And I totally empathize with it. You know, when you have a new building going up next door, you know, it's always a challenge, you know, for any individual property owner. And I look at this one, I do see some impact for the property. I mean, we looked at that and evaluated that. For the next-door neighbor to the south, there are a couple of windows that would face this. We asked the question about the windows. Fortunately, it's not like you're going to have residential units looking into other residential units. So, we did, you know, tease that out. But, I hear the concerns brought up by a couple residents. But, you know, this area, we feel, at least in the Planning Commission, we're trying to make, you know, a little bit more mixed use, but, you know, get some densely or get some dense multifamily dwellings here to work on that transition to buffer our neighborhoods. Commissioner Dubac?
Yeah, I support multifamily. And like I said, the height doesn't bother me. It's more about our ability in this situation to- I appreciate the consistency in the corridor. But, at some point, I think we can start, because we're getting these kinds of projects regularly and they often need a PUD. So, when can we start, like, upping the ante a little bit to get a little bit more public benefit out of each of these projects? Because they're certainly profitable. But, as far as, you know, environmental return or diversity of price point of those things. So, we can get, you know, housing that's affordable for seniors who want to get out of their homes, or, you know, responsible contracting agreements, right? How- when can we- I think we need a strategy to start incorporating elements like that into these situations where they need concessions from us. And I want more than just a nice building. It's a nice building. But, we need to make concessions. I would like for there to be concessions that are public benefit concessions.
Pricing is one of the issues that's on the table in our discussion about multifamily. There's definitely agreement at the Planning Commission level that we need to take a look at that and figure out how to offer a wider range of price points.
And on countless occasions, every property is unique and different. And some lend themselves to more negotiation on certain elements and aspects. I can tell you, we've pushed really hard on trees. You know, we did one up near Delamere. And we said, hey, we want to make sure you keep and grow and add a number of trees in landscaping. Every property is unique. And so, it's hard to say, like, this is our platform. But, like Commissioner Douglas said, I mean, it is an important point that we eventually have to comb through our master plan here and try to get away from the PUD and make sure that we have, you know, a more refined and directed ability to, you know, establish some ground rules in exactly the spirit, Commissioner Dubac, that you're saying. But, until that very long and arduous task is done, the Planning Commission is trying to come up with some recommendations. But, it's a fair point. You know, I can't speak that every property's going to have the same lend itself to the same conditions to negotiate because they all are different. So, we have a motion on the table.
So, yeah. I think that we have to have a bigger conversation about public benefit. I think this project's fine. So, I'll support it today. But, then I think we do need to make- I'll make a motion after we take this vote.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
See the hands of the nays? Okay, the motion passes. Commissioner Dubac?
So, I don't know if this is a task force or a Planning Commission thing, but I want to move that we establish a community benefits policy where if a concession is needed from the city, whether it's the sale of public land, whether it's zoning change, or a variance, that we have, you know, sort of a menu of benefits that we want in addition to the intrinsic value of the project. So, that being, you know, price point, you know, for greater affordability for seniors and others, to make sure that we're not pricing everyone out of our city, particularly folks who want to enjoy their golden years here and but want to get out of their home. You know, environmental sustainability, responsible contracting agreements. I would like to see, like, kind of a menu that that becomes a part of your process on planning, to say that we want some of these things in order for us to give this concession. Because I voted yes because I appreciate your strategy. I appreciate the corridor. I totally understand the softening of the transition. That makes sense. But, I think it's time to kind of take it to the next level. So, that's my motion. I guess my motion would be to give it to Planning Commission? To establish? Or do we need a subcommittee?
Well, I'll support. I'll second the motion.
All right. Now, let me make it make sense.
So, I think we had a motion over there. I'm not quite sure.
That was a motion?
That was a motion.
Okay. And that was a second.
Okay.
I'm not sure where that lands, however, if it's planning. Thoughts, Mr.?
Well, I think it's going to land in the development agreement. Remember, this is a two-step process under the PUD, is the Planning Commission's looking at it from a zoning ordinance standpoint. And there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that talks about community benefit. So, there's no formal review there, other than if the Planning Commission or the City Commission is part of your rezoning, directed staff to have some community benefit, as you termed it, added to it and the reasons for that. So, you know, I think where it would end up is in the development agreement, which this body approves and is drafted in between this meeting and when it comes back to you for a second reading. So, if you wanted some community benefit added to that development agreement, and you directed the city attorney and myself what you wanted, we would include it and inform the developer that his project has first-reading approval, subject to these things being added. And unless Mr. Gillum has a different process, that's where I would go with it.
And I'll- correct me if I'm wrong, and speak for Commissioner Dubac. I think what you're- we're looking for is a set of standards that the Planning Commission can look at because the Planning Commission does have leeway to make in a negotiation, at least in a planned unit development, not necessarily in a conditional zoning. But, so, we're looking for a city- a set of standards or areas of negotiability. And the question is, who defines that list?
Commissioner Dubac?
So, yeah, for clarity, what I don't want to- what I'm trying to avoid is, you know, say this, I would love to throw a bunch of amendments on this and make them put 50% of their water back in the ground. But, that was never part of the deal from the first time they met with you, or when they met before planning. I just want to start making up awesome things at the table that create all kinds of problems in our processes. I want, at the front end, when someone comes knocking on your door with an idea, to understand this is part of the deal in Royal Oak. And for the Planning Commission, now that is part of their process and their filter, too. So, these things are baked in before they get here. Because I just want to start tacking things on. I want it to be understood that in Royal Oak, if you're looking for a PUD, if you're looking for a subsidy, if you're buying public property for development, if you're looking for a zoning variance, we're going to want some things off of this list that bring added public benefit to your project beyond just the commercial value of the project, which, yes, that's great. But, there's so much demand, we're in a position now, I think, to, you know, leverage- leverage these investments a bit more.
At the same time, we also have overall strategy plans that we're working on from an environmental sustainability plan.
Exactly.
That would feed into something like this. Not only is it what the city does, but what do potential projects do? We have an aging in place. And we have a senior advisory committee that's going to come up with ideas and everything like that that need to be incorporated, not just on what the city does or what our investments are, but also what, you know, third parties do when it comes to city services, et cetera. We have an economic development manager. We have a plan for that and all of this. And so, you know, we have to make sure we manage it appropriately, where we're not doing something that's out of sync or becomes part of ordinance that conflicts with any of these other major initiatives that we have going on. So, I think the key to this will be to find something that's in harmony with things that we're already doing overall, that feed into the sub-umbrella when these things come in front of us. I think it's a worthwhile conversation. I will say, you know, we do look at these things. But, I think having a clear list for- to be more friendly and attract the type of development we're looking for, I think it's helpful to be maybe more articulate with our development community to say, hey, you know, we're interested in your building being lead. We're interested in stormwater management. We've done this with trees, and we've actually had great success. We have tree plans come back all the time now. And, you know, it's kind of like, well, can you do 10 more? So, you know, that's been very helpful. That's part of an ordinance specific to trees. So, I think if we're going to do this, we got to, you know, think about it in terms of an overall, you know, the pieces working together. Because we don't want to have a mismatch somewhere.
Agreed. And again, if someone, you know, wants to come in and they buy a property and they want to do something that's totally according to zoning, and they don't need any subsidies or anything from us, they just present a plan, then, fine. But, if they need a concession from the city, I think it's fair to say, like, we're in a position now where we can start asking for a little bit more, particularly when we know we need some diversity of housing price points, particularly in the, you know, near and around the CBD. So, I would like to direct staff to come up with a strategy to create that- institute that in our process. And I'm happy to help you inventory. What I think would be reasonable benefits, I'm sure commissioners at the table can come up with that as well. But, responsible contracting, environmental sustainability, affordability, other words.
Amenities.
Amenities.
I mean, yeah. I mean, you know, bicycle pumping stations.
Public art.
Hudson's.
So, I just- I want to start that conversation. My move is to get that conversation going however it needs to happen.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, that's a reiteration of the motion. Is everyone clear on the motion? Okay. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Permeable paving report.
Basically, this is just simply a report with my understanding that staff was asked to come up with various options in dealing with pervious paving, what could be done, what was potentially available, and where it might apply. I don't have a lot of comments to add to the report, except to indicate that we are, the city has been, allowing various types of permeable or pervious surfaces to be used in the city as part of development projects under the zoning ordinance, as well as under the stormwater ordinance when they comply with the stormwater design. So, there's two separate things going on here. One, you have a zoning ordinance provision that says various parking areas and other things have to be developed with a hard surface. It's a very short definition, but we've applied that to situations where someone has tried to use some of these basic items. And you'll see recently, staff in the city has actually incorporated several of the options in development projects and in city projects. The new parking deck that just opened, the driveway, has pervious pavers in it designed. And actually, that's the picture that's in the report. The driveway from 11 Mile, the very dark area, if you've come in there, is that type of development. The one thing staff has not allowed to occur under the ordinance is counting loose aggregate or gravel. That type of material to count is a hard surface. Simply, it has other issues that create problems in the sense of the gravel or the loose material being pushed on places where it's not supposed to be, either through snow removal operations or simply driving on it. It gets dragged. Then, all of a sudden, it's out in the street or it's on somebody else's driveway, or it's in the sidewalk. So, it- and it doesn't really meet that confined definition of a hard surface. So, we have not allowed that to occur under the zoning ordinance to say that it complied with a hard surface. But, as you'll see there, the zoo built a parking lot with asphalt that's considered pervious. They actually did design it to be part of the stormwater system for that parking lot. And we've used it in other cases. I believe it was Maryland Club. We let them use a grass paver system where the grass could go through it because it was just temporary for, like, emergency vehicles. If they had to drive across it, they could, and it would hold the weight. So, it's simply a report on options. The only suggestion we really made in it is if the commission felt that it was necessary to broaden how staff's currently dealing with the hard surface definition and the zoning ordinance, we'd amend that to add various things as acceptable and go forth from there. But, other than that, it was my understanding the commission asked for staff to look at a report and bring it back. So, that's- we've given you a basic report.
Motion for Mr. Twing. Commissioner Levaser?
With regard to gravel, I know some folks around town have gravel driveways. And the first question is whether that's currently permitted under our current standards and whether we would expect to see any change with that with regard to the changes proposed here?
No, it's not. Where they do exist, someone's either been granted a variance. It predated the ordinance. It's been there longer than the zoning ordinance. Or, they've done it and code enforcement hasn't caught them. But, no, it's not allowed. You can't have a gravel driveway currently. You can't have anything with a loose aggregate in it.
Okay. So, this is not proposing any change in that respect?
No. And frankly, staff would not recommend proposing a change to allow aggregate. We think there are significant enough problems with it. It would become an ongoing, not only enforcement issue, complaint issue, maintenance issue. There are a lot of things that we would recommend against gravel on, particularly in an urban setting, where you've got lots that are 40 foot wide and those sorts of things.
Mr. Bruce?
I think one of the difficulties with the existing ordinance, which pretty much mandates a hard surface, either asphalt or concrete, when a new builder or a person adding on to a home or redoing their driveway, whatever, just- and their architect is drawing up plans, they're reading the zoning ordinance. And the only option that they present to the potential homeowner or the existing homeowner is a hard surface. We can either do asphalt or we can do concrete, you know, pick which one you want. And they don't understand that there might be some wiggle room with the department, with the building department, that if they really want to invest in permeable pavement or pavers or whatever, that's a possibility, as long as it would build- meet the building standards of the community. So, I think I would be in favor of amending the language to make it clear that you could- the choices are there to have a permeable pavement in your driveway so that it's- people are aware of it. And I think that's the problem, is that there are- have been a number of larger projects that have had permeable pavement installed, just as you've described. But, people are with the mindset, because it's been this way for decades, that, well, it's either asphalt or concrete. Those are your choices. So, I think- I think in terms of public communication, I think it would be helpful to amend the ordinance, to make it clear to them right in the ordinance itself, that, you know, there's some permeable options that are available.
Yeah. I think Commissioner Bruce is right. And I think in lieu of what we might be doing with the stormwater utility, this is going to be even more important, that people understand what their options are to reduce the amount of runoff, you know, for their own personal financial reasons, but also, you know, as a community. As we see these more intense rainfalls and rainy seasons that we've endured over the last couple of years that look like they might be moving into, you know, a more regular pattern, what they can do and what options are available. I mean, I think that's important to get them thinking about it. And I would even argue, not just in our ordinance, but we look at a little bit of PR out there to different architectural firms and driveway companies and everybody else. So, you know, they can market, advertise, and inform as well. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes. Mr. Twing, I have three options that I want to ask you about. One is allowing aggregate of a larger size. That is not gravel, but stones dictating the- there's a way that stone companies measure quantity. So, larger stones that would not go into the system. Second question is, why would we not allow reinforced turf for places other than what you've described? That is, the one place where it's just an emergency drive for emergency vehicles. And then, my third question is, we do not allow driveways that have, like, two parallel paths for the tires with grass in between. So, those would be three options I'd like your feedback on.
Well, in reverse order, I think, under the way we've been treating the ordinance for if it's got the two-track- Well, in reverse order, I, I think under the way we've been treating the ordinance for, um, if it's got the two-track and it's, and it's of an acceptable material, we may, uh, accept it. We may add it to this revision because what you're actually parking on is the, the hard surface. The grass that grows through the pavers is not a material that's, or, or an option that's good for continuous use. It's not, if you, if you wanted to put it in a park for overflow parking and it's only used once a week, that's different than somebody driving on it every day, every day, every day and, and coming off it because it just, nothing grows. And then you're left with the dirt and the exposed plastic or other material that's there, and it's more of an aesthetic thing, I would think. So in a low-use situation, it, it could be acceptable, but in a higher use or higher, or higher weight use, I would say it's not. The third one in regards to stone, it's, it's, uh, whatever loose aggregate, I think the only one that we would really want to consider is if there was some binding agent to hold them together. Something that kept them from bouncing, somebody spinning their wheel and kicking one out in the street and hitting your car that's parked and breaking the window. It's just got a lot of issues with it that, and I don't know of the size that a tire can't move or, uh, doesn't become an issue, uh, that a snowplow can't pick up and move, that a snow blower won't move. If you're shoveling, I, I, unless you're talking boulders, I mean, but I don't, I don't, so I, the, the only, I, I think there are ways to, uh, secure an aggregate, but we'd have to look at that. I've seen some where they, uh, have some sort of binding agent that holds them together to keep them from moving, but you're almost getting at that point to a pervious asphalt, but I guess that's my answer.
So, going backwards now, so the idea, but does our ordinance prohibit those two-track driveways? I mean, how does somebody get that approved?
Well, generally what's, the, the, the planning office, which ministers and myself, that administer the zoning ordinance, um, don't see a lot of residential plans, and I, and that's why we suggested maybe adding some things in here. The residential plans are revealed, reviewed by the inspector in the building department. If they're under, if they comply with all the ordinance requirements, they just issue the red permit. So there's nothing that gives someone the indication that they could propose it. We don't get them proposed very often. If they are proposed, generally the inspector is going to ask one of the planners on staff whether that's acceptable or not, and that's where that sign-off has occurred in certain situations of pavers or other things, is when somebody's actually proposed it.
But are we, don't we want to keep that out of the planning department and just keep it as something that's permitted by right?
Oh, yeah. No, that's why we suggested changing it if you wanted to go there, but it's just a matter of getting to it.
Okay.
Yes, uh, Commissioner Macy and then Commissioner Bruce.
My question was just, so I had some of the similar questions to Commissioner Douglas, but it seems like I'm satisfied with that answer, and I think I would be interested in moving forward with some of those revisions as well. In the revised language here, it says, "All such parking lots, et cetera, shall be surfaced with asphalt, concrete, or an acceptable pervious pavement as determined by the zoning administrator." So that reads to me as the proposal comes and the zoning administrator says, "You shall do this, or this, or this." So I think it feels to me as, if this is something that would be reviewed by the zoning administrator, that's an, an additional clause that doesn't need to be in there, and I'm just wondering if perhaps Mr. Gillum reads that same way, or Mr. Twing has an explanation as to why that needs to be in there.
No, I, well, we'll take this through the steps and, and have everyone review it. This was just an initial thought. But keep in mind, every provision in the zoning ordinance is subject to interpretation by the zoning administrator.
Granted, yes.
It's just repeating here so that it's clear that the, if somebody's looking at it, that person has the review. So we sometimes add that at various points, but every, every statement or paragraph or provision is subject to the zoning administrator's interpretation.
Right, which is why I think it's maybe not necessary, but I, I get the point that we haven't not finalized language.
Commissioner Bruce?
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to draft language to include these revisions and then have it bring, come back to us as an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Proposal by, or a motion by Commissioner Bruce, and a second by Commissioner Dubbuck. Any discussion on this one?
Mr. Gillum?
Maybe some clarification. Mr. Gillum?
Commissioner Bruce, do you want the language to come back to this body? If we're talking about amendment to the zoning ordinance, it's going to have to go through the public hearing process at the planning commission level.
Yes, yes.
So do you want to refer the, uh, the suggested amendment to the planning commission?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I should have said that.
Mr. Macy?
Are we including Commissioner Douglas's proposed trio?
Yes, just to be considered initially, whether or not they all three make it in, the final version is, remains to be seen.
All possibilities. Gotcha. Commissioner Dubbuck?
Just wondering if we have the ability, um, you know, as we inform residents, because it's going to be a part of the stormwater ordinance, um, to let folks know, like, so this option, every square foot of it would absorb X amount of rainwater in a year. Is, is that kind of data available, or?
Well, a, a, as you'll see in the report, there's a difference between somebody installing it in a residential driveway and doing it on their own or hiring a contractor and counting it towards, uh, a storm detention system that's been engineered. So if it, if it hasn't been engineered, it may not generate any at all. Um, it, it's just might be a different system, so I, I, we could probably get you a report that says based on X number of yards of an appropriately designed, engineered system, what it would do. But there's, like I said, there's two, two different things here. Someone's residential driveway currently isn't going through stormwater attention review. It's not going through an engineered review.
Understood, yeah, I guess just in the vein of trying to empower our residents to take action, and I would, I'd feel a lot more excited about doing something if I could say, hey, I'm going to put 5,000 more gallons a year back in the ground instead of in sewer system.
It may be more important when this, uh, utility plan comes out or utilities comes out, but right now, that's not happening.
Okay.
And, and I didn't hear the answer to Dave's question. Did you want to see the draft language before we take it to the planning commission or no?
No, it goes to the planning commission first.
Any other discussion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those who are here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Twing. So now we're to item number 16, which is the approval of request or proposal recommendation for executive search services.
Um, so I don't really have a whole lot to say about this, um, because this is the commission's, uh, process, but the one thing I do want to say, uh, we did have a, what I consider to be a pretty, uh, uh, effective meeting this past Monday, or actually, um, yeah, Monday last week, um, with Commissioner Douglas, uh, Commissioner Macy and Commissioner Gibbs. Basically, uh, what, what occurred during the meeting is I presented several RFPs to the commissioners. The RFPs are, uh, samples of other RFPs, similar RFPs issued by surrounding communities. We, in essence, went through, uh, the different, uh, samples, um, of those communities as well as, um, uh, some of the other samples, uh, that I, I came up with, in essence, by reviewing the RFPs. And the commissioners went through them, uh, one by one, um, to indicate, uh, whether those were acceptable items to them, whether they want to make any changes to it, whether they wanted to add or remove them. So, uh, we, we discussed the scope of the project, we discussed, um, the qualifications, uh, of the firms that we're going to be looking at to, uh, to submit an RFP or a bid, uh, for the, uh, city manager's search. Most of the other items, uh, that are going to be added to the RFP are going to be pretty boil and play type of items, so, uh, that's why those were left off, also because some, there still needs to be some legal review, uh, done in RFP that's going to be issued. I do want to point out one thing, um, that I think is really important to understand about this, is that, uh, this is an RFP, um, that is solely intended to target, uh, executive recruiters, uh, and in a broad, broader fashion as possible, in essence. So this is not intended to, to narrow down a candidate or what we're even looking for in a candidate. That is a, that is part of the process that's going to occur, um, after, uh, the, uh, winning bet has been selected. So with that, um, I turn it back over to you.
Questions for Mr. Vandelaar?
Or for the committee?
Or for the committee, for that matter. Mr. Macy? Close call.
So, um, Mr. Vandelaar, when we talked about this at the, the committee meeting, one thing that was talked about is you said normally we'll do an RFP like this for 60 days. And it seemed like a long time then, and in the weeks since, I've been feeling more and more like it's a long time, and in the last five hours, I've been really feeling like it's a long time. So I'm starting to wonder, eh, what your thoughts are on perhaps shortening that to be 30 or 45 days? Would that be?
Um, you know, to be honest, I've had some internal discussions about that, uh, since, um, and, um, you know, given, given the, uh, the fact that Morello, I like to think is a very attractive community, we shouldn't have any issues, uh, getting responses back. Certainly also the way we're asking, um, or restructured the, the scope of the project, it's going to be fairly easy, I think, for, uh, existing firms to respond to relatively quickly. We're not asking for anything out of the norm necessarily compared to other similar RFPs. So having said that, uh, after, uh, doing some back and forth internally, I, I wouldn't even, um, be opposed to going with something as low as two weeks, uh, but that's, uh, that's up to you, obviously.
I, I have to say that I don't know a lot about this process, but, um, working career counseling, and it seems like people who are motivated to respond will respond in two weeks, the same way they would. And if you give them 60 days, they'll respond on the 59th, and if you give them two weeks, they'll respond on the 59th.
Yeah, for what it's worth too, and, and that will might, that will, I think, accelerate the, the response rate. We're not just going to put this out on Madden, for instance, where we're just have to hope that somebody sees it, we're also going to target, uh, firms specifically, uh, firms that we know are specifically in business to do this type of recruitment.
Good strategy. Any other questions for the committee? Commissioner Douglas?
Speaking as one who works in professional services and bids on government projects, two weeks is just crazy. I mean, can we make it to a month? Four weeks?
No.
Yes.
Three weeks.
It's, I, I mean, they got to get, they have to get the information, if the, you know, they need to, if the person, uh, who need, who usually does that for them is on vacation, then they're already kind of behind the eight ball. It's summer, people are on vacation, I would, I, I think we'll get a better response if we split the difference between 60 days and two weeks and say a month.
Uh, we'll go Commissioner Gibbs?
I completely agree, having been someone who has responded to government RFPs, and two weeks is just, it sounds great, it's just not enough time. There's a lot of documentation that needs to be pulled together and compiled and presented, and obviously, we want the people we're trying to recruit to have a, a good response. You know, we want them to be able to supply something that's a quality product, and I, I, I'm more than happy with four weeks. I think that's adequate.
Commissioner Levaser?
I, I was thinking the appropriate, uh, compromise was 45 days, uh, even dropping down to a month concerns me a bit. From my vantage point, the selection of the next city commission is, pardon me, the next city manager is likely the most important decision that, uh, this commission or the next commission will make, uh, in the next couple of years. Certainly making sure you've got a good quality firm, uh, that, that is assisting with that process. I, I don't want to move so fast that we are excluding, uh, potentially the right firm to assist with that project.
Mr. Macy?
So I could be convinced to move back to a month, but I will say, and I think Mr. Vandelaar said this already, we are seeking out firms who've done this before, done this exact thing, and we, we used other RFPs from other cities to create what we have here. In other words, we're not asking them from some major deviation of something they've done before. If they can't pull it together in a month, then how long is it going to take them to, to do our search process with us? We want people who are experienced and competent at this. I understand two weeks may feel short. Um, I, I feel going over a month is maybe too much.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yeah, I'm fine with 28 days a month. Uh, if we don't like the pool, we go back out to bid. That's not something we've never done before. But certainly, given, you know, the, the notice that we were given and the need to get leadership in our city, this isn't something we're going to drag our feet on either. So we'll put the pressure on, try and get the right firm on board, and if we're not happy, then we go back out. But, you know, 28 days a month, whatever we're calling it, that's, that's fine.
I'd argue, I think a month is appropriate. I think that, um, yep, there are folks that do this for a living. I think when you get into the two-week realm, you know, a good firm's going to want to go out there and research the city, kind of get a better idea of our direction, our vision, the city politics, things like that. So, uh, for them to be able to do their due diligence in order to put an adequate proposal, uh, out there, if not, if they're given a short time, we might find good candidates, uh, to do this job, but they might charge us extra because there's a lot of uncertainty they weren't able to uncover. For example, if, you know, you have a really divisive school board in search of a superintendent or a really divisive, um, you know, city council, um, they may have a lot of extra work they anticipate because they're just cycling through candidates. You know, I don't like that candidate, he had an ugly tie, or, you know, she, you know, uh, worked in Ohio and whatever, you know? So you can have these issues pop up, but the more that they can get comfortable, the more accurate a bid I think that they can give us and the more commitment they give us. But yeah, I would agree, like going out six, eight weeks, I think is, you know, you want serious parties that have the capacity to do it, and if there's somebody right now at this moment that has the capacity to do it, then they're going to sign up for that bid right away and book their work. But we want to make sure they give us a good proposal and we're not getting upcharged down the road.
Commissioner Douglas?
I will move approval of the proposal, um, specifying a 30-day, uh, response period.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Macy. Further discussion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those who are here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, this brings us to the last item on the agenda, which was added during the approval of the agenda, which is item number 17, city manager retirement discussion. So I think I noted Commissioner Dubbuck added this to the agenda. Which is the prevailing rule of the chair. If you add it, you speak to it first.
Sure, I just, uh, given that, uh, Mr. Johnson's notice, uh, stated that he would be retiring as of June 30th, and that is next week. I thought it appropriate to, you know, get an update, uh, from, uh, the city attorney perhaps about our options going forward and, uh, where we're at in the process.
Commissioners at the, your, your last meeting, um, you had requested, uh, City Manager Johnson to provide you with a proposal to, in some form or another, continue his services as a city manager. Uh, the mayor and I have both had discussions with Mr. Johnson. At this point in time, um, we don't have anything that we were able to bring back in terms of a recommendation to you in terms of terms. Um, I don't think that necessarily rules out the possibility of, um, Mr. Johnson continuing working for the city as a contract employee. So I, I guess that's the, the first option, I suppose, is for, um, for myself, I mean, I assume would be, the logical person would be me, to have further discussions with him and determine if in fact he is interested in returning to the city as a contract employee subsequent to his retirement. And if so, under what kind of terms, and then potentially bringing something back to you for consideration at a future date. If, um, Mr. Johnson is not interested, or if, um, there doesn't appear to be something that I'm comfortable bringing back to you for formal consideration, um, uh, the option you'd have, or I guess my recommendation or suggestion would be, um, to consider, um, thinking about a process to determine or to, to identify and, um, re, and retain, um, an interim city manager. My recommendation would be for a list that's maintained by, excuse me, the Michigan Municipal Executive Group, which is an offshoot of the ICMA, the International City Managers Association, which is also affiliated with the Michigan Municipal League. So that would be, um, uh, the fallback, I suppose, if we're not able to reach some kind of a, a potential agreement with Mr. Johnson. But regardless whether or not Mr. Johnson is interested, um, whether he's not interested, whether able to reach some kind of an agreement with him, we need to deal with the immediate question, which is his- question, which is his retirement, which is supposed to be effective as of this coming Sunday. So the action that I would recommend relative to that would be, number one, for the commission to actually formally accept his resignation as city manager for purposes of retirement effective on Sunday, the 30th. I would suggest that you consider designating Assistant City Manager Chief O'Donohue as the acting city manager in the meantime, and then let me speak with Mr. Johnson, see if we can bring back some kind of a proposal for him to come back as a contract employee. If not, to come back to you with more information as to what your options would be to retain a, I'll call him an interim city manager, someone on a longer-term basis, recognizing that the chief has other responsibilities at the police department, and I don't think it would be fair for you to ask him to stay in the position of both city manager and chief of police for a period of, you know, maybe even as long as six months, something like that.
Well, I'll start with, go ahead.
I have a question.
Okay, I'll start with Commissioner Macy.
So you, just at the end, you said, in the meantime, you would recommend that we appoint Chief O'Donohue, but you mean starting July 1st. You don't mean starting today, right? Or, okay.
Upon the retirement of Mr. Johnson.
Okay, just making sure I understood.
Yep, yep, absolutely correct, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner LaVassar?
I, I know that Chief O'Donohue's appointment as assistant is, is, for, for some reasons to, you know, to, to make sure that there's someone to assist in Don's absence, and, and the, the question is whether it would be appropriate for us to have an alternate in case Chief O'Donohue is not available. And I want to get Chief O'Donohue's perspective on that.
You saying, if I would be acting and then another assistant manager, or someone else to consider in?
You know, and you would certainly know better than the, the, the rest of us, you know, perhaps there was a situation where Mr. Johnson was out of town, and there needed to be someone with feet on the ground locally, or whatever the case might be, whether you were called into that role very often during the last couple of years.
I, I would say, one is, I should preface it, is, the O'Donohues are planning a family vacation in July, and we're gone for a week, or the Outer Banks, we do it every year. But, other than that, I guess what I'm hoping for, or anticipating, is this would be a short-term thing. If, it would be for a matter, i- i- if we work something out, ideally, we work something out with Mr. Johnson, and then that's in place. If we don't, and we move to an interim, I, I wouldn't anticipate this being for longer than a month at most, I would hope. So for that time, I think it would be fine. Even when you're away, you're never really disconnected, so your cell phones, emails, and things like that, so.
Okay, but your, your family vacation is sometime within the next month, give or take.
Oh, yeah, it's in three weeks. But, you know, when, in my current role, when I'm away, I'm never away. You know, you still, I, I don't get to just shut off the emails and things like that, so.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yeah, I think my understanding is that we're just, we're taking this step to ensure continuity of leadership in the very short term, while we assess our options, see if there's a deal to be struck with Mr. Johnson, and if not, then, then look into the interim for MML, and we just need to make sure that someone is at the helm of S of July 1. But I don't think any of us anticipates you having to take on that role longer than a few weeks, so I would think we'll be out of this. We'll figure out what we're going to do for the duration of the search before your family vacation.
Sounds good.
We can be reasonably confident about that, except for you.
We're going to find it, we're going to pick an interim manager in three weeks.
Right, if we can, if we get a recruiting firm in two weeks.
Picking an interim manager in three weeks sounds quick.
Commissioner Perush?
My recollection from knowing someone who was one of those standby, we can handle it in an interim basis, group with the MML, the group that's been identified by the organization are people that can, can jump into it quickly, because they're in place, I think, originally, for situations that cities found themselves in when, all of a sudden, the city manager dies, or all of a sudden, the city manager has a family emergency and really cannot fulfill his or her duties, and you need somebody quickly. And so I think that's why the MML has developed that list of people that can be rapid responders, so to speak. So it's not as if you're going to be looking at that list of nine or 10 potential people that can send, that can fill in as an interim basis, and they're going to be like, well, let me think about it for a month, and let me clear my schedule. You know, they've unidentified, or the organization is, the people who can jump in right away when they're needed. And I have a feeling this is that kind of a situation. So I think, I feel confident that we're going to be able to find someone to be, if we need to, and in, in an interim basis, that we can keep the, the period that Chief O'Donohue is in this position is, is relatively short. So I, I guess I'm confident because I'm, I was familiar from when that organization was formed strictly for that purpose. They're ready, they really are ready.
Just to echo Commissioner Perush's comments, as I understand, the individuals that are on that list are all individuals that have actual city manager experience. And so you're right, when they come in, they can hit the ground running, it's really just a question of, number one, determining what their availability is, and make sure that they're available for the timeframe that you're looking for, and then to negotiate the terms of their service with you. You reduce that to writing, and then you're ready to go, so.
Yeah.
Commissioner Macy?
We also have to interview them, right? I mean, we're not just, like, putting our, throwing darts at a board, so, I mean, I, I'm, if Commissioner Perush feels comfortable with this, she, she seems to have a fair amount of knowledge of how this works, I'm just thinking, again, on the career side of it, you have to hire someone, you have to interview them, call their references, make a decision, then find out, you say they can be ready very quickly, but I guess I would be surprised if the, if all 11 people on this list can just, you know, wake up on a Monday morning and show up at Royal Oak, and I, I understand they can hit the ground running when they arrive, but it, three weeks seems like a very short time to both identify and hire and get started, someone who will be here, but.
Yeah, but the reality is, that's the situation we're in. We target three weeks. If we have to go longer, you know, we can, you know, bring somebody in within staff to, you know, support the chief while he's on vacation. I mean, there's little things we can do. I mean, the target should be a few weeks. I think what happens is you put out the call, and with that, you have a handful of people that have the capacity or are interested. That whole list, you know, maybe people are not interested in Royal Oak, maybe they live too far away, maybe they're like, yep, this is perfect. You get a handful of people, we get packets of information on them, and we can kind of define that process pretty quickly. It might take a couple, you know, special meetings to get it done, but I, I, I think that the list isn't going to be as expansive. I think it's going to be, you know, we'll have a handful of people to look at. And that's only in the event that Mr. Johnson, you know, finds that, you know, he wants to fully go into retirement and not consider, you know, bridging the gap to when we hire the new city manager. So I think three weeks may be short, we don't know. This is not something that happens all the time, but I think we should target it, make it a goal, and it's not the end of the world if we can't, you know, get it done in three weeks. We just have to come up with Plan A Point B.
So I was just, my, the only thing I was going to say is, back to Commissioner LaVassar's suggestion, why don't we right now say Plan A Point B is, if we don't have someone by that time, Mr. Gillum can step in as the, it, that's, that's all I'm saying, is having an A and B right now, and then hopefully we won't come to that.
I think we'll have another meeting before, you know, the three weeks is up.
Okay.
So maybe we kind of say, you know, what the, I have no problem creating some sort of succession, but I think at this point, you know, if we have somebody already for three weeks, I think a week or two from now, we can see where we're at in the process.
Okay.
I mean, maybe at the end of the day, I mean, we can. I, I think Mr. Gillum would do a fantastic job, but I haven't talked to him too much, if he's interested. I wouldn't want to put him on the spot just yet, you know, and.
Okay, okay, all right, I'm done. I, I cede.
Do we have a motion on the table yet? No. All right, well, let me take a shot at this.
First, I will move that we accept the resignation of Don Johnson as city manager effective June 30th, 2019, and that effective July 1st, 2019, that we appoint Police Chief Corey O'Donohue as the acting city manager, with City Attorney Don Gillum as his alternate in the event that we need him to step into that role before we have resolved this on a little bit more semi-permanent basis, and that we direct them to coordinate with staff a search for a appropriate interim city manager while we conduct the search on a more permanent basis, utilizing the, the resources available to us through the Michigan Municipal League.
The only question I have for Commissioner LaVassar is, in the event that we don't, within a reasonable time, make arrangements with Mr. Johnson?
Certainly, we'll leave that as an open option as well, but the, the purpose is to take the steps forward with the presumption that there will not be some agreement reached with Mr. Johnson on a more continuing basis, but we'll leave that door open, that we're, we're moving forward, we're taking the steps needed to find someone as an appropriate interim city manager.
Motion by Commissioner LaVassar, or second?
I'll support.
Okay, we got, second by Commissioner Perush, it was like three hands all at once. Discussion.
You're accepting his resignation, or you're accepting his retirement?
Retirement, yeah.
Because you said resignation.
No, it's resignation, that's right.
Due to retirement, his resignation due to retirement.
I, I think that's an appropriate language that the mayor has referenced.
Commissioner Macy?
Just like I say, I spent a lot of time arguing about something that he just went ahead and put in the motion, and then everyone supported, so I guess I shouldn't have argued.
Mr. Gillum, are you okay with that, since your name was brought up as a, you've been nominated?
As an alternate, yeah, that's fine, I'd be, I'd be happy to help out if, if the chief is unavailable.
Sure.
So it wasn't an option?
It's law.
Commissioner Dubbuck? Just to be clear, so I'd be, it's clear in the motion that option one is to still continue negotiating and see if there is a possibility of coming to terms with Mr. Johnson.
That's my, that's my first step, as I understand.
But in parallel, start the process of looking.
Hopefully, I'll be able to speak to Mr. Johnson tomorrow morning, so.
All right, there's a motion on the table, is there any other discussion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. This is to the end of the agenda.
And will be adjourned.
A motion by, Mr. Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Gibbs. Any lengthy discussion on this topic?
I have some thoughts.
With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Roger.